I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's got the payroll and other reports in their share file. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at those. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved by the chair.
Should we have a motion to approve the agenda as well?
Oh, sure.
So moved.
You know, Mr. Robbins, Commissioner Robbins, yeah, I'd like to take item 27 off of the agenda for today.
Did that change?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then we'll move on.
We didn't move on that agenda yet.
What's that?
On our consent agenda?
Yep, that's what I'm...
Okay, scarred me. I am so sorry.
I asked for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I gave you that. All right.
Thanks.
I'll move for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And we'll move on to opportunity for public comment. Just so if there's people that want to speak, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission? Mr. Clausen? Come on up. Just state your name and...
Don Clausen, 47174, 275th Street. I was surprised recently when I went to the Lincoln County Solid Waste Transfer Station. It was closed. So I called the highway department and said, oh, you got to take it to Sioux Falls landfill now. I used to have to travel five miles one way. Now I had a 35 mile an hour round trip. I guess when I addressed the commission a year or more ago about littering signs, I didn't realize that now the problem might become even worse if people don't know what drive the extra miles to the Sioux Falls landfill. So I guess I'd like to request that you consider reopening after whatever repairs it needs. Because I can imagine a lot of people have to drive a long ways now, those that don't have big trash truck, trash hauling trucks coming by to pick it up. So... Well, I can't, I won't ask the question. I hope I can see the issue on the upcoming agenda sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Hearing nobody or seeing nobody get up, we'll go ahead and move on. Any commissioners like to make an informational report today?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to confirm also what Mr. Clausen said. I did get a phone call from a resident in District Two township this past week that is concerned that in his particular township, there are, and does seem to be more garbage dumped along these gravel roads. Not just garbage, but furniture, appliances and so forth. And it's unfortunate that apparently we have some residents that might be doing this. I know to some degree, even when the transfer station was open, this did happen. But he seemed to reiterate to me that it just seems to be happening a lot more now. And they're trying to do whatever they can to clean up their road ditches. But there is a concern, and I said I would share that with other members here at the commission meeting today. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner want to say anything? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to regular business. Item number one, Mr. Meyer Henry. Who's handling that?
This is Shannon Nelson, the chief financial officer of Augustana, and is here to answer any questions about the financing and the project, et cetera. This is required by not only state law, but federal law as a hearing before the authorization of bonds. The county acts as a conduit. As I like to say, they have the baby. But once the baby's born, they're not responsible for it and don't pay child support. And actually, we have a statutory provision which provides that the county cannot pledge any of its credit taxing powers or anything else. And because the federal law required governmental entities to issue these bonds, the obligation to pay them back solely rests on Augustana. And once the closing takes place, it's basically between Augustana and the trustee, and the trustee collects. The only thing that the county will see is every year, due to a national audit requirement, accounting requirement, these bonds will send a report saying how much is outstanding, and it goes in one of your notes somewhere of how many private activity bonds the county's issued for nursing homes, hospitals, colleges, and just says what the outstanding balance is. But both for the public, we always get the questions of if they don't pay it back, does it affect our credit rating? And the answer is no, it doesn't. And the other question we get is, does it count for constitutional indebtedness for the county? And again, because it's no promise to pay for the county, it doesn't count for Article 13, Section 4 either, which sets the county's debt limit in the Constitution. Ballard's Bar is the bond counsel in the, not the firm that has an office in Sioux Falls, but one of their sister firms out on the East Coast, I think Pennsylvania.
Philadelphia.
Philadelphia. So they're the ones that drafted the resolution which we'd ask you to pass. The only space that they wanted, that they left a blank was 26 goes in when the Argus leader published the notice. They didn't put in all the other papers because for federal purposes, they only are concerned with one that gets the environs of the publication. But all other publications were made also in the county's papers. So with that, we would ask that you pass the resolution that was in your packet with the 26 put in the highlighted spot for the date. And with that, I'd leave it open to ask Shannon about the project.
This is the third time we've done this. I think we've done it twice before. This is our third time. Glad to participate. I don't know how many Augustana grads we have here. We have a few.
Commissioner Schmidt, when you say third time, you meaning the county?
This is the third time, yeah.
That Lincoln County has done this?
We have done this activity. This is our third time.
Five and eight?
Yes, two thousand and five, two thousand and eight.
I have a question. How did you arrive at the figure? I mean, why wasn't it 50 million? Or why wasn't it 140 million? Or why wasn't it 5 million? How did you come up with this figure? It kind of surprised me.
Yeah, so the housing project, the capital project is going to be about 50 million. To, we're going to build a brand new residence hall, and we're going to remodel two additional residence halls on campus. Then we're actually refinancing, refunding the 05 and the 08 bonds, which is about 25 million. And then there's cost of issuances, debt service reserves, those kind of, which is about another 10 million. So it's going to be about an $85 million project. Did I answer your question with that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're doing Tuve and Solberg, building another one.
We're renovating Solberg and Berg soccer.
And then solving, yeah.
And then building a new freshman sophomore residence hall, yeah.
Tuve was just a flashback.
That's okay.
All right.
Hopefully, sorry, hopefully Jim, when you come back to campus, it'll, next year, it'll look a little different, so.
Anybody have any other questions right now? If not, is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of the resolution? Anyone who would like to speak against the resolution? Hearing and seeing nobody would consider a motion to approve the resolution? What's that?
I would proudly move to approve it.
Probably?
No, proudly.
Oh, proudly. Thank you.
There is a few teachers that I had there that maybe would reflect, maybe, probably.
Commissioner Robbins, also being a graduate of Augustana, I proudly will second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and move on to item two. Public hearing to consider an application for temporary malt beverage license for the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation located at 34.12 acres in northeast quarter, including railroad property 29-99.51, Lincoln County, South Dakota, for a May 1 fundraising event. Wendy Sweater, you're going to address this for us?
Yep, I'm here on behalf of the foundation. They're planning a Raise the Roof fundraiser like we did last March, but it'll be on May 1 this year. The plan is to open doors at 5:30, have a meal at 6 with a silent auction, a live auction at 7, followed by the Peterson Farm Brothers as the main entertainment at 8 o'clock. So we should be wrapped up there probably, I would say, before 10 o'clock that night. So we do have security lined up, insurances lined up for the event, and a bartender as well.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, I'd move for approval.
It is a public hearing.
A public hearing?
It is a public hearing, so is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of the malt beverage license? Anybody who would like to speak against it? Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, I will move for approval for the temporary malt beverage license for the Lincoln County Fairground Foundation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. There you go. All right, item three. Award bid for surplus tax deed property legally described as tract 16 in D and L Industrial Edition in the southwest quarter, section 24, township 100, range 51, west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, also known as Lincoln County parcel number 100. Point 50, point 64, point K 016. Sean?
We had two bids on this property. One was from Mike Brown from MDB Properties LLC for $10,000. The second was from Jared Fredericks for $1,899.
Sean, you said the first bid was 10,000?
Yes, sir.
And the second bid was 1,000?
$1,899.
Thank you. Consider a motion to award the bid to Mike Brown?
So moved.
Second.
Comment?
Yes.
This is the third time this individual's placed a bid. The only time he had a second bid on it, and even the second bid was not high enough according to the last time. I just want to make sure that I give a thank you out to Mr. Brown for acquiring this property, so.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second?
Was that motion by Aaron's?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to item number four, awarding a bid for farmland lease that properly legally described as the northeast quarter of section 36, township 100, range 51, west of the 5th Principal Meridian, except the west 370.42 feet of the east, 2,132.80 feet of the north, 823.17, Lincoln County, South Dakota. Sean?
We received one bid from Alan Ripentrop for $3,799 a year for the two-year lease.
Consider a motion to approve?
Is that each year or for two years total?
That is each year.
Okay.
Given the fact that we've solidified our intention of selling it, a two-year lease, I think would encumber us far greater than what we would be earning from it. So I would be reluctant to approve such a lease for that amount. It again is still way under the market.
Well, what do we want to do?
Well, your options are what? Turn down the lease and re-advertise for one year?
Correct.
Is that your motion?
Well, I'm just sitting here waiting for anybody to have any comments, because if no one has a comment, we got to move off the dime here. And I don't hear anybody saying they're in favor of it.
I'll make a motion to re-advertise for one year.
I'll second that.
Reject and?
Reject and re-advertise.
Yes.
Okay, the motion to reject the bid and re-advertise?
For a one-year lease.
For a one-year lease.
Correct.
And the second was Schmidt, thank you.
Correct.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item five. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. Well, good morning. I'm pleased to welcome Peter Smith, who is the new executive director for Rock. Rock, as you know, serves Lincoln County and it's out of Wagner. And Mr. Smith or Peter came and visited with me. Also with him this morning is Scott Fink, who is the transportation director for Rock. And I told them that we would welcome them because it's been a long time since Rock has been here to talk to the commission. So Pete, we welcome you and share with us your new leadership and all the different things you've been doing here in our community.
Excellent. Thank you. And it is Rocks, Rural Office Community Services. Sorry, Jim, but it's called Rocks. And the Rural Office Community Services has been around for about 56 years. We serve right now presently over 32 counties, Lincoln County being one of them, that we've been in for probably almost all those 56 years. Presently in Lincoln County, we provide services transit, home base right out of Canton right here, and we have transit that services all of Lincoln County. We also have a senior mills program in Lincoln County. Presently, we have one right here in Canton, a senior mills program. And the positive impact of these programs is immense. We also have a weatherization program that's been here forever, and that provides weatherization for homes, which is health and safety, efficiency, and home rehab, which means we rehab homes. And for not just health efficiency and all those type of things, but also for blight. So sometimes counties, cities also use that same program. We also currently do a thing called CARES Act, helping people stay in their homes by paying, helping pay rents through the CARES, the new CARES funding, through the South Dakota housing. We have been doing that for a while now over the last year and continue on through this year, all the way through 2023. So we are helping people to stay in their homes. The other programs we don't do here, we do in other counties, because some counties, there's another agency that does those, and so we can't duplicate services. Some of the other things that Rocks has brought into the table since I came here, I moved here about two, three years ago from Boise, Idaho, and I'm a therapist. So one of the things we're going to be bringing here is behavioral health services. That trying to work with people mainly getting out of prison, those type of things, adjusting to life, dealing with opioids, all those type of things, human trafficking. We've been funded by the federal government to pursue those things, especially going up and down I-29 up here, down through Sioux City and Sioux Falls. And so we also cover Union County and mainly Lincoln County. We have a transit right there in Bearsford, which kind of covers southern Lincoln County. In our services here, you guys, I believe the county has supported us with some level of local match, our county match, and I believe, I don't want to quote me on that. And then we have been working now with the local communities here all throughout Lincoln County to partner with everybody in the community. And so you'll see fundraisers. I would like to meet you guys all individually at certain times. We have a program director named Scott Fink, who runs our transportation program. And we also have, I'd like to be able to guys to meet all of our management crew. One thing that's different about Rocks going forward since I took over is our level of community engagement. And so that's what's going to increase, is that you guys know who we are, what we are, how we do it, how we're audited, how we're accounted for. Just it's transparency, wide open, because we want to continue to provide the great services that we do here. And I hope you do see the services we provide do impact the people that they serve. And they're for anybody to use. They're not limited to any certain population. But there is a huge impact, and we have results of that. We have the data for that and how we've helped to, we can't eliminate poverty, but we help to lessen the impact of it. So someone can't get to a medical appointment, we're there to do that because they can't afford an Uber ride, or even wheelchair express, these places that charge a lot. So our transportation, we serve Medicaid, we are a Medicaid provider. We provide, and if somebody needs a ride, we're going to give them a ride. If they need a meal, they're going to get a meal. They do have to qualify under the poverty guidelines for our weatherization, home rehab program. They do have to qualify for those programs. And the CARES Act funding, they have to qualify. That's a big COVID impacted because of that. But I just want to take this opportunity to come and come here on a regular basis to at least say Rocks is present, we're here. And then I'll bring some more information here so people know how to access our services. As we are, obviously, we're well digitized and all that kind of stuff, so people can access us. Just basically so that we are present, that you're not somebody you haven't heard of, even though we're here the whole time. But I think we need to engage our communities more, and that's my whole goal of being here and meeting Mr. Schmidt and all of you guys. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Pete, I think it would be a good idea if you scheduled again sometime, and if you were to bring those statistics as to how many families or households
Absolutely.
utilize your services, or how many people, Scott, you're traveling around the country and where they go. And I don't know that people really are all that aware. Some are, but some aren't. And I think that you provide those services. Some people really do need them. And the more information we can get out to the public, the better we're off.
And we have to keep track of all that data. That's what guides us. That's what our results, we use those results or data to help us see if our programs are even effective or not. So we're always being measured by the federal government, state government, those type of things. We have data that can narrow it all the way down to this town, this county, or all of our counties. So we definitely will do that. Next time, we can reschedule the time to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item six, Sioux Falls CASA Red Cape Week proclamation. Commissioner Schmidt, you're going to read that?
Would you sign it?
I will sign it.
Well, we're going to have some fun, because with us this morning, we have Stacy Tezen, who is the executive director for Sioux Falls CASA. And Stacy, do you want to briefly, before we get this proclamation to you? And then we're going to have some fun, and everybody's going to put on a red cape and...
I like that you call it fun.
We're all going to fly somewhere, you know. And, but anyway, do you want to just tell a little bit about Sioux Falls CASA before we start?
Thanks, Jim. Hi, I'm Stacy Tezen. I've been here one time before. I'm the executive director of Sioux Falls CASA. CASA is court-appointed special advocates. And really, what we are is the voice for children who've been removed because of abuse or neglect and placed into the foster care system. We work with volunteers who go through 30 hours of training and then are guided with the help of a case manager to really get to know everyone involved with that family. Our goal as a program is reunification. We know that kids do best with their biological families, and we want to get them back home as safely as we can, as quickly as we can. Sometimes, of course, that doesn't work, because parents aren't making the changes or can't make the changes that they need to. And so we're there for both sides. We obviously want reunification, but if that can't happen, we'll also advocate the other way for termination of parental rights. So our volunteers are really the heart of what we do. And so this time of the year is Volunteer Appreciation Month. April is also Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. So it kind of goes together hand in hand, because we can't do what we do without our volunteers. We currently are in need of about 130 more volunteers. So of course, if you know anyone who would ever like to, we do cover the Second Judicial Circuit, so we are mini haha in Lincoln County. So we go here on Tuesday afternoons when there's abuse neglect cases. And we're here to represent our program, but also to represent the best interest of kids.
Well, Stacy, we have a proclamation here, which I'll attempt to read. It says, whereas Sioux Falls Area CASA Court Appointed Special Advocates was created in 1994 at the request of Circuit Judge Gene Keen to be the voice for abused and neglected children in the foster care system. And whereas 570 children experiencing abuse and neglect were referred to the Sioux Falls Area CASA program in 2020, our highest number ever assigned to the program. And whereas Sioux Falls CASA's largest age demographic for referrals is children under six years old. Whereas the impact of trauma imparted by abuse and neglect is lifelong, leading many to heal themselves through substance abuse, resulting in frequent incarceration, creating a loss of employment, and much more, and offering, often repeating as adults the cycles of abuse they experienced themselves as children. Whereas in 26 years, 690 volunteers have given of their time, their talent, and heart, providing over 93,000 hours to our children to help them find safety and permanency. Whereas children are vital to our community, future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Whereas in an effort to bring attention and awareness to the needs of our abused and neglected children in the Second Judicial District, Sioux Falls CASA is hosting a Red Cape Week during Child Abuse Prevention Month, because every child deserves a superhero. Whereas the red cape symbolizes everyone's ability to step up and help abused and neglected children in our community. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among superhero citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business community as well. Now therefore, we, the Lincoln County Commission, do hereby proclaim April 4th through the 10th as Red Cape Week and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, businesses, to increase their participation in an effort to support children and their families, therefore preventing future child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Signed by Tiffany Landine, Chair of the Lincoln County Commission. So we have this for you, Stacy. And now, let's have some fun. So you want to give the red cape to everybody and then you know, I have one, Commissioner Gibbon, but you want to stand in the middle, because I don't want to seem like a dwarf standing next to you all the time. So you can get in the middle.
I can do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Well, you know, he is here and we're here. You know, he is here and we're here, you know? Now you got to throw that, yeah, we throw that over your shoulder. Here you go, Jim.
Thanks.
Hey. You got to throw that over here, you got to be red cape.
Yeah.
All right.
Throw that. Throw it over your shoulder. You're getting a little, it's a tan tall.
Thank you all.
You bet.
I think the last time we put it over our shoulders so we could see it here, right, Jim?
I think you're right.
Yeah, put it over your shoulder.
Did this? Yeah.
Come on, Jim, you can do it.
All right.
It's okay.
I just hold it up.
Video that's in use.
How did you do this? You're having as much trouble as I am, you know?
I, I am. I'm going to start all over again.
How about if I throw it like that?
Good job. That's fine.
How's that look?
Great.
This always stays on.
The audience will appreciate it.
Okay.
Red cape, yay!
There you go.
Thank you.
Stacy, take this over to our auditor, she needs her hand on this too.
Okay.
Madam Chair, it's kind of interesting that we just talked about how we're going to try to help kids prevent from being incarcerated, and our next item is the inmate population, so.
Right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item seven, Commissioner Aaronz.
Thank you. Jake, do we have Bill Garnos? Bill, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, thanks, Bill. So, Bill, I'll give a little bit of an introduction on what we're talking about here, and then I'll turn the floor over to you to give the presentation. And then Jake, is what we see on the screen there, is that the PowerPoint that Bill submitted, or is that the report? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the PowerPoint.
Thank you, appreciate it. So in late November of 2020, Commissioner Schmidt and myself visited, and Sheriff Steve Swinson, visited with Sheriff Milstead, Commissioner Bender, Chief Deputy Gromer from the Minnehaha County. And what we discussed is how to move forward, work together on housing our Lincoln County jail population in Minnehaha County. And at that time, we came to a informal resolution that Minnehaha County would take care of and house all of Lincoln County's jail population.
Commissioner Aaronz, and I, I don't want to interrupt you, I know we had draft one and we tabled it, and this is on our agenda as draft two, so I'm wondering if we need to, are we intending on approving this draft, and maybe we should do that before we dive into
Sure, if you want to, we can. I'll make a motion to approve draft report number two.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll on that, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibb?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Because we haven't had a time to discuss this with Mr. Garnos separately, I'm going to continue to say or vote no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
I'm going to vote no today as well on that, but the motion does carry. So then we'll go ahead and, Joel, sorry about that, go ahead and carry on.
Okay, thank you. And so what will happen now is it's no longer draft report in the eyes of Lincoln County, so we can release it to the public. But I think a lot of the data that's going to be brought out from the report that we just approved is going to be talked about by Mr. Garnos here this morning. So like I was saying, at the end of the meeting with Minnehaha County, we ended up with an informal resolution for Minnehaha County to house all of our jail population moving forward. At the end of that meeting, what we resolved to do was to do another comprehensive jail study population, including both Lincoln County, who did a report in 2017, and, or, excuse me, I've got that date wrong, we did a previous jail study. I think Bill can talk about what the date was. And then we did it for Minnehaha County as well. So what we're going to present today, or what Mr. Garnos will present today, is a consolidated comprehensive report on the jail populations in both Lincoln County and Minnehaha Counties. So, Mr. Garnos, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
What's going to be the easiest way to click through all of the PowerPoint slides? Is it just to have somebody there click through them, or is there a way for me to control it? What's easiest and best for you all?
Jake will do it, and I think you just need to say next when you're ready to move on.
Great, that works for me. So, good morning, everybody. I hope everybody's had their coffee, I don't know if this will be the fun part of the meeting. I just was up in your neck of the woods here a couple of days ago, I was up in Watertown visiting my mother in a senior facility, and so I was able to drive by and thought about you as I sped down the interstate. What I wanted to do today, we can go next to look at the agenda. I wanted to just show you how the report was organized, what data is in there, how I reached some of my conclusions. And I don't know that I want to spend an awful lot of time going through all of the slides, I more want you to see what is in there and where it's at so that you can, if there's some issue that comes up that you want to examine further, you know where to go to get the detailed information on it, but there's a ton of information here, and I don't want to spend all of the time just looking at my nice graphs and tables. So the report has an executive summary, it has a brief overview of the previous inmate population studies that were done for both Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. Then it looks at the inmate population trends for both, it then goes into the projections for both, and then there's some appendices, which are data for Lincoln County, where I've had to consolidate all of the data from all the inmates you had scattered all over for several years to show, you know, your real numbers in total month by month. So the appendices are just detailed data for you. We can go next. So the executive summary, it has the report organization, and it describes how it's in there, but then there is a section on key findings. And so I took the 100-plus pages of narrative and tried to narrow it down to the key findings. So if you can't bear to weed through all the data, that's the easiest way to get from where we started to the finish and the methodology of getting there. So there is a key findings that has been reflected in additional data at the end of the report. Next. So, previous inmate population studies that I had the privilege of doing, we can go next. I've done a couple for Lincoln County, I did one in 2017, and let me apologize for those of you that had to sit through that, because it was a long and deep dive into the data at that time. Then a couple of years later, I did an update when you all were wrestling with inmate housing issues. And I don't think they ever had a chance to present that one to you, I think I got blizzarded out of that presentation, but those are the two previous studies that I've done involving Lincoln County's inmate population. And then next, there's a couple of slides showing studies I did for Minnehaha County. I moved from Pierre down to Kansas City in 89 to join a consulting firm. I did the inmate population trends and projections for Minnehaha County back in 1999, and then did some extensive work with them in 2013 as they were finding themselves full and needing to look at expansion. And then I continued to work with Minnehaha County in 2016 and 2017 as they were in the early stages of their facility development. And then, and then I was not involved with anything after that. So there's a lot over the last three years in Minnehaha County that has obviously happened and that I was not involved with or aware of. So that required doing some homework. Next. Inmate population trends. I hope everybody finds this as exciting as I do. In the study, what you'll find is on all of these various areas, I do things with graphs because some people are very visual and like to see trends. I do include all the numbers because I know some people want to do more with quantifying and estimating numbers. And then in the main report, there's also a boring narrative explaining it, which is why it's 100 pages long. So, next. For Lincoln County, the inmate population data that I focused on was your total average daily population, your annual breakdown of your inmate population by facility that you've housed them at, and then also your annual housing costs. And I know we talked about this before, but you'll hear me use the term ADP an awful lot, average daily population. And so just keep in mind that you know as every day, your inmate population goes up and down. So for looking at trends over time, I'm looking at each month's average. So every month, when I say your average is, say, 45 inmates, you know, you know you've had days above that and you've had days below that. So we'll also look at that, that, that range. Next. So this is your average daily population, Lincoln County inmates, all facilities over the last 12 years. The rate of growth is obvious. You'll notice my graphs all start looking the same after a while, I try to put in some trend lines and show what the lowest it's been and the highest it's been. Again, some people react more to the visual, some to the numbers. So here's your numbers, these are real inmates that you've had to pay for inmate housing costs and the trends, and kind of the parameters you've been dealing with. Next. The other thing I wanted to do in both, and I've had to do this on a couple of projects, is look at what the impact has been from the pandemic. Because when we hit March of 2020, everybody suffered a massive dip in their inmate population due to the pandemic. And so I have on a couple of projects been trying to both measure the dip and then analyze how quickly it's going to refill and get back to where we were before the pandemic. And so here's an example with Lincoln Counties over just the past three years, the monthly average daily population. And you can see that, you know, for 2018, 2019, and February of 2020, you were sitting at about an average of 45 inmates, you know, and then for the last 10 months of 2020, about 43. So you had a dip due to the start of the pandemic, but it has since rebounded, and you are basically back to where you started. So there was not a sustained lowering of the inmate population. I was telling Commissioner Aaronz, that was one of the things that surprised me, and we'll see it in Minnehaha too, is one of the other jurisdictions, the numbers were just very clear, as soon as that March hit, they were losing 20 to 30% of their inmate population, and then it stabilized at a low level. And it's going to have to then rebuild and refill. Here, you've rebounded, you've, you haven't bought a year or two with a lower population due to the pandemic, so the impact on you has been negligible. Next. So here's the annual breakdown of your average daily population by facility. And you can see that gray area is where you were having to farm inmates out all over the place. And the black at the bottom are the ones that you've held at Minnehaha County Jail. So, you know, now in 2020, you're back there, but you can see, I wanted to show, you know, how the inmate population continued to increase even when you didn't have Minnehaha County as a housing resource. But you'll also notice that over the last three years, your inmate population, 44, 45, 46, you know, reasonably stable for the last three years anyhow on an annual basis. Okay? Next slide. One of the things I also looked at was the annual inmate housing cost. Now, of course, this doesn't include transportation, or staffing, or any of that, but justing of what you have to pay other jurisdictions for housing your inmates. One of the things you'll notice is your inmate housing costs have increased, you know, dramatically over the last three years when your inmate population has not. And the reason is because of the high per diem that you pay at Minnehaha County, you know, you're at $97 per day at Minnehaha County, and when you were farming inmates out everywhere, you were looking more at like $65 a day. So, you know, you've had that impact of both your inmate population, plus you're now paying a much higher per diem, but the lower per diem would have been offset by inmate transportation costs running inmates all over the place. Okay? Minnehaha County is a deep dive into their data. And I got to tell you, the spreadsheets that I was using for Minnehaha County were the largest I've ever done in my consulting career, and I think my scrolling finger is cramped. It was something like 67 columns wide by 3,400 rows deep. And pulling the data out of all their daily breakdowns is a real chore. So there's a lot of data on Minnehaha County. It may be of limited interest to you, I know it's of great interest to them. What I included with them is all the historical data I had, plus the updated data I got from them on monthly bookings. I looked at their average daily population of all inmates, I looked at their annual average daily population by facility, and then did separate analyses of the numbers they have out on electronic monitoring or out of custody, and we'll talk about that in a sec. And then looked at their annual ADP by jurisdiction, how many of them are Minnehaha County inmates, and how many are they holding for others, or the feds? And then finally looked at that high-low daily population range to see how much their inmate population fluctuates. Now, I'm not going to go through all of this, but there's a couple of key things that I thought you'd find interesting regarding Minnehaha County, and we can go through those quickly. Next. This is all inmates over the past 16 years, so this would be their inmates, your inmates, federal inmates, everybody over the last 16 years. And I put in little, those vertical lines to try to show, you know, when I did the 2013 study, this is what I was looking at, you know? And then when I did their updates in 2016 and 2017, this is how much more of the picture was revealed. And then now with the update as a part of this effort, here's what we've learned over the last little over two and a half years. So you can kind of see the broadening window that we're looking at. And again, it gives you that high-low parameter of what's the highest it's been or lowest it's been. And again, these are all monthly average daily populations. Okay? Next. Looked at it closely just over the last three years to see the pandemic impact, and again, you can see there's very little. It did immediately radically dip, but it has since rebounded, and we're back to where we started in Minnehaha County for their inmate population. So the pandemic impact is essentially over and we're back to normal as to where we would have been there. Okay? Next. Now, this is the annual ADP by facility, and the thing that's interesting is you see the gray there, that reflects the inmates that were housed at the old CCC. And you can see their numbers were starting to dwindle until it spontaneously combusted in 2018. And also about the time I finished that 2013 study, you'll notice that Minnehaha County started having more inmates on electronic monitoring, and also started tracking inmates that are out of custody, meaning they're not taking up a jail bed. And so you can see how they all stack together sort of on an annual basis by facility. Next. This is the same information but broken down by jurisdiction, so that you can see how many of the inmates that they're holding are Minnehaha County inmates versus the ones they're holding for others, other counties, including yourselves. You can see the numbers that they've been holding for feds, and then the Department of Corrections had a few inmates in the system until And, uh, then the Department of Corrections had a few inmates in the system, uh, until, you know, they were squeezed out also. Okay? Next. So the next thing we had to look at is obviously Minnehaha County's primary concern has to be Minnehaha County's own inmate population and own inmate needs. So this shows their inmate population, total inmates, uh, not counting feds, not counting inmates they're holding for any other jurisdictions. This is just Minnehaha County's inmates. Next. And again, I took a look at that, uh, the last three years closely to see what kind of an impact there's been from the pandemic. And again, you can see on Minnehaha County's own inmate population, uh, a significant drop, but it has rebounded and we're pretty much back to where we started or close to it. Next. Now, inmate population projections, I know from when I was there in 2017, I think I had four different slides to give disclaimers about inmate population projections. So let me just carry over all the disclaimers about projections. Uh, we can, uh, we can go to the next one. This is the, uh, the part on the left shows your actual average daily population for each month. And so the projections that were originally developed for facility planning purposes in 2017 are shown, and then the 2019 projections from the update with the additional data. And then the, you know, the range, you know, obviously the further out we go, the less accurate they become, but it gives us some parameters to plan within that I think are reasonable for facility, for planning purposes now. I've also included the midpoint between these two to use that for, uh, estimating just a, a, a number instead of a range, and that's on the next slide. These are the numbers. That shows you the 10 years of forecast, the year, what the 2017 and 19 projections were in the midpoint ADP of Lincoln County inmates that I would, are the best numbers I can come up with for what you will be looking at over the next 10 years. Obviously there's growth, there's reasonable growth, but it's not, uh, through the roof. Okay? Next. Now we go to Minnehaha County and was, I did the same thing. I took all of their data, I added, uh, in the data since 2017, looked at a couple of different models that we had used in previous projections. What had happened is I recall back then is, uh, in 2013, we had just, something could have just passed that, uh, that Senate Bill 70 or whatever that was, that Criminal Justice, uh, Act. And, uh, as a part of that study, we were trying to estimate the impact on county jail populations. And it was a little controversial at the time because, uh, it had just been passed. Uh, the people at the state level thought, uh, inmate populations at county jails would go down as a result of it. And I think the sheriffs were pretty much in agreement that no, it was going to make it go up. So what I, as I recall, Model 1 was the baseline projections and Model 3 was what we estimated the impact would be with the addition of the Criminal Justice Initiative at that time. And so for current planning purposes, I, uh, ran a new trend line and I'm going to be used, I used that as the benchmark and baseline for Minnehaha County for planning purposes, since it shot right down the middle. Next. And here are the numbers, the next 10 years, what that Model 1 and 3 showed, and then their new numbers for what I would consider to be my best guess as to what their average daily population of just Minnehaha County inmates would be. Okay? Next. Per diem. Now we're into the money. Current per diem is 97.34 for other counties at Minnehaha County. The per diem is that using this really complex formula that the feds use for estimating actual cost per inmate per day. When the US Marshal Service has to house an inmate in a local jail, they will pay what the actual cost per inmate per day is, but it's not just a market rate. You know, the sheriff Mills said couldn't say, you know, I'm charging you 200 bucks a day because you got no other place else to go. Um, there is a very complex formula for calculating direct costs, indirect costs, and allocating costs. And, uh, they use that to set this per diem rate, uh, for other counties and for the feds to use. Um, in the conversations I had with them, this per diem's been in place for about a year and a half. It has not yet been recalculated based on the jail's new construction, operational costs, inmate or inmate capacity. Uh, and it gets very complex because there, there's things like they won't pay debt service on a part of a facility that is not operational and, you know, there's, uh, it is very complex, you know, it's a big fat document to calculate these per diem costs. But then once that's set, that's what they will pay, you know, not a penny more, not a penny less. And it was my understanding from Chief Gromer that they will likely begin that process of recalculating and adjusting the per diem rate either late this year or early next year. That can take a while because that is a data-heavy, uh, process. Um, I also can't tell you frankly, maybe Chief Gromer has a better idea about this, but I can't tell you whether that's going to make that per diem go up or down. Uh, certainly they've got more costs with a larger operation and their jail addition, but it's also spread out over a greater number of inmates. So the cost per inmate per day, I don't know what the impact is going to be on that per diem until they figure it out. But that's the best information I've got on per diem at the time. We can go to the next one. So now let's talk about capacity of the jail. With the new expansion, the county jail has a total capacity of 728 beds. They are only staffed, uh, for 580 beds. There's a housing unit that is unstaffed and unoccupied right now. So there's an additional 148 beds that are there, uh, and available for use, but there's no staff for them yet. So they will need to staff up before those beds can be made available. They're there, but, uh, there is a, a pretty significant staffing impact. It also takes a while to recruit, train, and fill. So they're not available overnight. It took them almost a year to fully staff up to support the new addition between recruitment and training and, uh, and the, the staffing up involved for that. So the physical beds are there, but they can't open them until they're staffed. So that'll be a Minnehaha County issue. Next. This is a breakdown of the beds in their current facility, just so you can see their transitional housing, their dorms 1 and 2 in the basement of the older building. Their housing units, they refer to as unit control. Number 3 is the 148 beds that are not currently staffed. Next. One of the things I always find interesting is, you know, we house inmates in a combination of single cells, double cells or two-person cells, and dormitory beds. So besides how many beds they have, I'm always interested in seeing the type of jail beds that they can provide. So of the 580 beds in the currently staffed jail, 76 of them are in single cells, 244 are in two-person cells, and 260 are in dormitory beds. So about 45% of the staffed capacity of the current facility is in dormitory beds. Okay? Next. I also discovered that the newer jail addition was designed to support vertical expansion in the future. So in the future, at some point, they could physically add two more layers of inmate housing, each with 112 beds. So if that building were fully expanded as designed in the future, the facility could potentially provide 952 jail beds, the 728 in the current facility and the two extra layers of 112 for a total of 952 potentially in the future with additional construction on site, still keeping the whole site under 1,000 beds. Okay? Next. Had a recent snapshot of the inmate population, I think this is from a week, maybe two ago. Uh, there were 465 inmates in the jail and there were 55 inmates not in custody, meaning they were either out on electronic monitoring or they were otherwise out of custody. Uh, of those that were in custody in the jail, 379 were Minnehaha County inmates, 37 were yours, 31 were feds, and 18 were either inmates held for other counties, typically surrounding counties, a few parole violators, and I think there was one DOC inmate there. And this snapshot population of 465 represents an occupancy level of about 80% of the facility's current staffed capacity. So again, this is just a one-day snapshot, but I think it gives you a better feel for the distribution of the inmates that they have there. Okay? Next. This was the difficult part, uh, to work through with the numbers. Um, when I looked at the numbers over the last three years, primarily pre-pandemic, about 14% of Minnehaha County's total inmate population were not in custody, meaning they were not occupying the jail bed. Uh, they have inmates out on electronic monitoring and they have inmates that are not in custody. Uh, these typically include inmates that have been released by court-ordered furlough to go to treatment, or maybe you always have a handful of inmates that are at the hospital for one reason or another. But if you look at Minnehaha County's total inmate population, about 14% of them are taking up a jail bed. And so, you know, here we're trying to analyze a potential rental bed capacity and bed needs, and so I had to remove these inmates from the count since they're not taking up a bed that would otherwise then be available as, uh, rental bed capacity. So, uh, that's an important thing to keep in mind that they got a lot of inmates that aren't taking up beds. Okay? Next. So this shows, and now we're at the end of the report, mercifully. It shows your in custody, uh, Minnehaha County's in custody, average daily population at the bottom for projections. Lincoln County's on top of that. And then I've drawn in a red line just to show here's where we hit 580 beds, which is the current staffed capacity, just to give you some idea of what we're looking at over the next 10 years and how it squeezes out. Okay? Next. And then here are the numbers. And so I wanted you to see, here was the total average daily population for Minnehaha County, the ones I removed for not in custody, leaving the in custody population, then adding in yours so that we have numbers of, to work from for Minnehaha County in custody plus you. Okay? Next. And then I took a look at inmate housing costs. Now, I did not include this in the draft, but I know this is the, what everybody's trying to get to. So I took your Lincoln County estimated average daily population and just multiplied it by the current per diem of 97.34. Now, we know that within a couple of years, that per diem is going to change, but I don't know to what. But just using the current per diem with no inflation, no escalation or anything, this gives you at least some idea of the growing impact of, uh, the housing cost to support the inmate population that we see coming. Okay? I think that's about it. Oh, no, we got more. Uh, the 85% rule. Now, I've always been a skeptic of this, but I had to apply it and I wanted you to understand what it is, and it's not, it's, it's not a, it's not a jail standard, it's not an industry standard, but there is what's called the 85% rule that your average daily population should not be more than 85% of your total capacity or beds. Because remember, we're dealing with a monthly average. So every, half the time, your inmate population is going to be spiking above the average. You need extra beds to accommodate that. And then you've also got to provide capacity to separate males and females, minimum median maximum security inmates. So it's just a recognition that when you hit 85% of capacity, it becomes increasingly difficult to manage the inmate population and to have the right place to put inmates when they're coming through the door. You know, for example, you may have, uh, you have beds in the male units, but, uh, your, the female unit is full and you've now got a new female unit coming in. You're below capacity, but you got no place to put the inmate. The, the higher the occupancy level is as compared to capacity, the more problems you run into like that. It's more common to have things like you have an inmate coming in who's maximum security and all of your beds are in minimum security dormitories. You know, so you have to move people around. It's not that at 86% the facility is instantly unmanageable, it just becomes more and more difficult, uh, to run a jail facility properly when you hit that 85% level. Okay? Next. So then we ran the numbers, average, on the current 580 beds of staffed capacity, when you hit 493, or when they hit 493, that's when things start to progressively get a little bit more difficult to manage. Uh, the 465 inmates that were in custody when we had that recent snapshot, that was an 80% level, so we're well within that 85% rule for now. When Unit 3 is staffed with the additional beds, then 619 will be the new 85% level that we used. When that gets hit, then things start getting a little bit more difficult to manage. Okay? Next. Now, this one, you can spend a lot of time looking at. I used those same stacked bar graphs for Minnehaha County's in custody and then, uh, Lincoln County's on top of it. And you can see between the red lines, that's the current staffed capacity and 85% level. And then above that would be, uh, if Unit 3 were opened here in a few years, uh, what they'd be looking at for maximum number of beds and when the inmate population would start getting difficult through growth. Okay? Next. And I, one of the things we also looked at is once Minnehaha County has taken care of their own and taken care of your inmates, they still will have some rental bed capacity for housing either federal inmates, uh, or inmates from other counties, other surrounding counties. You can see that it diminishes year by year as your needs grow and Minnehaha County's needs grow, but there is still rental bed capacity for others for them, um, available, just not much and not for very long. Next. So some of the observations, you can go back and look at the graphs and they'll maybe make some more sense. You can go ahead. The first one was that Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties combined inmate population is going to hit that 85% of the jail's current staffed capacity by 2024. Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties combined inmate population is going to continue to increase, and the number of jail beds then available for them to rent for other jurisdictions will be, uh, squeezed out. Uh, Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties combined inmate population is going to continue to increase, hitting 580 within 10 years, so they obviously have to do something before that. Next. Their own in custody population is going to continue to increase and will hit the 85% level of their current staffed capacity in 10 years, so they need to do something even to deal with their own inmates by then. Uh, and that's, obviously staffing and occupying Unit 3 will give them more rental bed capacity, both for accommodating their needs, your needs, and to provide more rental bed capacity for them once it's opened. Next. So the purpose of all of this, I know you have difficult decisions to make regarding, uh, agreements and budgets for inmate housing. I wanted to try, try to provide as much of the information as possible to help with that, uh, effort on your part. Uh, I know a lot of these decisions are not data-driven, but to the extent that any of the data can help, uh, with the decision-making, that's what I think this entire effort was for. Next slide. Uh, you know, ultimately, a lot of the problems or timing issues are things that are going to be up for Minnehaha County to wrestle with. They're going to need to decide when to open the additional inmate housing, like in Unit Control 3. Uh, they're going to have to decide how to increase the facility's staff, uh, including recruitment and training so that staff would be available when needed. And then they're also going to have to continue to analyze what the budgetary impact is of additional staff and a larger operation versus potential revenue. additional staff and a larger operation versus potential revenue for holding inmates for other jurisdictions, particularly the feds. But, you know, you're in a good position, since you are a priority customer, and there are beds there and beds available for the foreseeable future, and a couple of potential ways of expansion that can be done, you know, relatively quickly compared to having to build something. Next. All right, we're done. So that's it. And a lot of data there, a lot of information, but that's what I was able to pull together, and I'm hoping it helps. I'd be happy to answer any questions now in the future. Because all of this is put together this way, if you find yourselves six to twelve months down the road and want an update on your inmate population or their inmate population, it's real, it takes me minutes to put together now that we've done this effort. So if some updated data can help facilitate your discussions with Minnehaha County, you know, just let me know, and I'll be happy to update yours with the data. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Granos. I just, I have a question, if you are able to answer it. What's the typical per diem that you're seeing as it compares to Minnehaha County per diem?
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, I found two surprises when I did this work on this update. One of them was that you rebounded from the pandemic impact, but the other was the per diem. And that's a critical factor, since that is a multiplier for the inmate housing. I typically, in facilities of around this size, will see per diem more around sixty-five dollars per inmate per day. When you get into small and medium-sized facilities, particularly rural facilities, a lot of times I see forty-five dollars per day. But they are not carefully calculated actual eligible costs like the feds do and like what Minnehaha County has done to set theirs. A lot of times, it's just everybody around here is using forty-five dollars a day, so we're forty-five dollars a day. It's not, it's not a calculated real cost per head per day. I think you were seeing a lot of sixty-five dollars a day when you were farming inmates out elsewhere from Minnehaha County. But that's, that is a, that is a high per diem.
Thank you.
To Minnehaha County's credit, you know, they have the backup for it.
With the, just, I have another question that I have. So when I was looking at your charts on your PowerPoint, you had projected for 2022, so when we're working on our budget this year for 2022, there was a 1.827 million dollar number on your chart. And I'm wondering, I'm assuming that didn't include any of the other housing costs, but how, how would you recommend going about budgeting for next year, knowing that Minnehaha County's going to redo their per diem?
Yeah, I think you've got to just go with the existing per diem, and the estimated ADP is the best starting point. I mean, I don't know what they can or will negotiate on, you know, or what it would be in your best interest to try to negotiate toward. If you're looking at a fiscal impact, I'd use those numbers for projected ADP, multiplied by the current per diem, and I'm going to guess that's probably going to be your best guess for the next year or two. I don't, I wouldn't expect to see a new per diem, at least for 2022.
Okay. And then, do you think that trend is, I know in four years, our housing costs doubled, and then I think in the last three years, they're at, I don't know, sixty-six, sixty-seven percent increase, if my math is right? You expect that to continue, so with the 1.8, and then in a couple of years, you know, we're going to be in that 2 million, that's, you think that's realistic, and that's what we should be budgeting for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I do. Yeah. You know, and, you know, it's such a difficult game to, you know, to try to, I mean, you've been through it, where you've been farming inmates out everywhere, you know, at a lower per diem to try to save some money, but then you lose, you know, and that was by, because you had to. But then, you know, you, you know, you make it up by all of the transportation and staff and vehicles, and, you know, having inmates scattered all over the place, you know. So I don't know that there is a cheaper or better option out there. But that would be my starting point, if I was budgeting, to use the projected ADP and current per diem.
Sure.
And I would say even three years out, you may be, you may be looking at the same thing, I would say the same thing for 2023.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins, you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions, if I may, Madam Chair. You indicated that Minnehaha County has backup information for their ninety-seven, thirty-four. Is that something you can share with us, where exactly that ninety-seven, thirty-four comes from, as far as, you know, whether it's employees, food service, heat, water? Is it, it's broke down that too much? Do you have a chart for that, or a graph for that at all?
I do not, I do not. I have none of the documentation for where that's, where Minnehaha County worked that out with the feds. I think that typically, it's a, when I have seen it in the past, I mean, it is a pile, it is a quarter to a half-inch pile of paper that calculates direct and indirect costs fairly, you know, to try to capture all the costs that are a part of real cost per inmate per day, but without plugging things in there that can't be justified just to run the numbers up. So I don't have the formula. I'm sure Gromer could provide either the documentation or maybe a summary of it, but I know from when I've seen these things in the past, they're, to get it through the feds, and when the feds are paying it, it is a carefully scrutinized and very detailed document. It's like an audit type of document, but I have not had it.
They did not share it with you, very good. Another question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Can you give us a reference in your, in the years of working with counties? Any other situation where a county of our size and our inmate population, where they simply rent out or, you know, house their prisoners, or their individuals in other
Yeah, you know, in my consulting work, everybody that I work with is typically in the kinds of situations that you all have faced, where you're, they're either overcrowded in an old facility, or they've got overflow that's farmed out everywhere. A lot of times, when you get into larger facilities, you know, everybody around them is dependent upon them, it's not much different than what you're facing there. You know, I'm down here in Kansas City, we see the same thing around, you know, jails in some of our population centers here in Missouri, and supporting, you know, everybody around. But when, when the beds are full, then they're doing the same thing, they're farming inmates out to any place they can find a bed available in driving distance. You know, so that is not unusual. I'm really hopeful that the situation you guys are going to negotiate here works out well for both of you, so that you're not dependent on a half a dozen other counties having, you know, a few beds available for you. But it looks like you're going to pay for it, with all due respect.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I've got a couple more, but. Mr. Granos, so when the sheriff's working, and we're working on a new contract with Minnehaha County, I think the, the current contract is a static number, forty-five beds. How do we structure that for the number of beds that we're going to need, but not be paying for beds that we're not using?
Yeah. And again, I don't know to what extent there's any wiggle room or negotiating room. My recommendation would be to work out something that's based on inmates, not beds. You don't want to really reserve a certain number of beds, whether you use them or not, and pay for anything over. You know, if you were to say, look, we want to pay for fifty beds, you know, and, you know, if we only have forty-five inmates, you know, we're eating the cost. I would rather see you do it based on inmate, you know, actual usage, excuse me, and average daily population, and use the numbers in here, because that's going to be real, you know, jail bed utilization. When making those negotiations, just be very conscious of the difference between paying for beds versus paying for inmates. See what I mean?
Sure, I do.
I would not want beds, I would want rate per inmates, and here's how many we think we're going to be sending you, and, and you deal with it accordingly.
Thank you. Is, is there, and maybe you can't, maybe you're not able to answer this question, but is there a tipping point where it doesn't make sense to rent beds anymore, from what you've studied?
Yeah, you know, we tried, that was what I tried figuring out in 2017 for you, because, you know, at that point, when you all were wrestling with, where is that point that it would have made more sense to deal with our own inmates? And the work that I did in 2017 and 2019 was trying to help find that, that tipping point. And that's a good way of putting it. And, and I don't know that we ever did establish the threshold, but it really didn't, didn't matter after, you know, after the bonds didn't pass.
Sure.
But yes, I mean, obviously, there is a tipping point, but, but it's one of those things that, you know, you got to be looking so many years out into the future before hitting.
Thank you. That's all I have, anybody else? All right. Nobody else has any questions, so thank you for the presentation.
Maybe nobody's still awake.
Everybody's still awake, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Normally, it's the big dollar signs that jolt people back to reality, so. If there's anything else I can do to help give you numbers to drive your discussions with Minnehaha County, let me know, but I, I think this gives you some idea of what they're looking at also, when you sit down with them to work something out. And I think you're in a way better situation than you were the last couple of times I was with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You bet. We'll go ahead and move on to item number eight on the agenda, county assistance request. Ray? Morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm assuming that you all received the cover sheet, or whatever you want to call it, that I prepared, regarding this case, which outlines the bills in question and the payment, prospective payments from Lincoln County. This is a case that I've been working on since last summer, so it's taken a while, and it's kind of been complicated. A gentleman who's had some cancer issues and some pretty severe stuff, and going through chemotherapy and, you know, all that's related with cancer, and so there have been several, several actual applications with our office during that time. And I don't have the exact figure, but I do know that his medical expenses are at least a half a million dollars, if, if not more. And so, it's a big dollar thing, and so we wanted, before came to talk to you folks about this, wanted to make sure that everything was, was through, and we got the numbers down where we want them to. One thing that we, that helped us out was he got on insurance starting January first of this year, under the ACA marketplace. So all of the expenses that we're talking about are from 2020, from, starting January first, 2021, is covered. But he was not able to get insurance prior to that time, and so the bills dating from, I think it was early August, when I, when I first talked to he and his spouse, and so all the, the bills that we're talking about are kind of during that time span, from August through the end of the year. And one of the, one of the requests that were made, that was a preauthorization for chemotherapy on a couple of different occasions. Now, I don't have that down on this sheet, and that, there's a reason for that. What I have down on the sheet are eight different hospital stays, both at McKinnon Hospital and the Obera Heart Hospital. And actually, he did have some heart issues, too, so that was part of why the heart hospital was included. In addition to the cancer, there were heart things going on as well. But this family, and there are, there's also children in the home, and so it's got a little bit more complicated, and the numbers were a little bit confusing, because when I started with these folks, they had a fair amount of assets available to them, relative to what the normal person that comes into our office sees. Maybe not compared to the general population, but at least compared to the people that we typically work with. And they were both employed prior, both spouses were employed prior to this, and so up until the, the new diagnosis of cancer, things were going okay for them, but then this came along, and he lost his job because of the health issues. And so they were depending on one sale, or one income for a period of time, and like I said, had minor children in the home. And during that, that time span from August to December, the hospitals between McKinnon and Obera Heart Hospital sent us eight different notices of his stays there. And those are notices that are required by law, under state statute, that the county receive in order for the county to consider assistance. And these are for emergency hospital stays. And again, in addition to that, he also had his request for chemotherapy on top of that. So I needed to wait until all of the billing, the vouchers, as we call them, the request for payments, all of that came in from both hospitals, and I, and some of those, I can price myself in office for the lower costs that the county pays, whether it be the cost ratio or the Medicaid rate, but some of them I have to send up to peer. And the return time for sending claims to peer is anywhere between two to four months, so it takes a long time. And so I finally got all of those claims through that we've been waiting for. And the one, the formula we use for determining eligibility, financial eligibility, and what the county liability is, is called the ability to pay form. And because their income and their circumstances changed a number of times during the time span I was working with them, I actually did four different ability to pay forms for different points in time. And what I came up with is what is outlined in this, this form here. This gentleman is actually now receiving social security disability, he got approved, filed for disability and got approved with S, for S, what's called SSDI, and there's, he does not have Medicare yet, because there's a two-year waiting period for that, so he needs to keep the marketplace insurance. But the, but the formula I used to calculate county liability at this rate is with his SSDI income, and then his wife's income as she continues to, to be employed. And I used what the, the final figure on the form came out as, is what the total liability is for Lincoln County, and that amount is that twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Now, I took, uh, took these eight hospital stays, which, um, uh, there, the bill charges for these eight hospital stays are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. But when you put the, uh, the, the claim, what the county liability is either at the, it's listed as DRG, DRG is the Medicaid rate, or the county cost to ratio, whichever is less, plus whatever, what they show they have ability to pay for themselves, that's where that $26,000 figure kind of arrived at. Because they do show some ability to pay because they, they still maintain some of those assets and they do have income. Plus with the reduced rate, all those calculations com, combined, um, it showed that I, what I thought the best option for Lincoln County was, was to take these eight admissions, um, to the, and, and deal with these because those are what we got the legal notices on. Um, and, and at this point, well, in, with this scenario, rule out the chemotherapy because that's above and beyond, um, ability to pay or what the county liability is. So these hospital stays, most of them, the county rate is relatively low. Um, the one on top that says partial payment of, uh, 2,700, that's actually the bill, the bill for that, um, I don't know the exact figure off the top of my head, but it's around $66,000, I think, somewhere in that vicinity. But by the time you add in all the numbers to add up to that 26,000, it only shows a partial payment for that particular stay. And then the other seven, we would actually be paying what the, the designated county rate is. So out of, long story short, out of a half a million dollars in hospital bills or in, not just hospital, but there's doctors and anasthesias and, you know, all the, and medications and all that stuff tacked on. What we're asking for is Lincoln County to pay, um, these eight claims at the rates determined for each for a total of $26,554.99.
Um, sir, I'm just, I'm looking at the information I have. I see seven. Is there one that we don't have for that amount?
Two, three, four. Excuse me. So I've been saying eight. There's seven.
I just wanted to make sure we had the same information.
Okay, I tacked on one that wasn't there. You're right. Seven.
But the amount's 26,554.99.
Right. And, um, one, one thing to note too, and that, um, I, I probably wouldn't be involved in, but I believe Lincoln County is part of the catastrophic county poor relief, um, program. And, um, is, assuming they are, yeah, any claim, if you're, uh, with that program, uh, any claim that the county pays over $20,000 can be submitted to the catastrophic program for reimbursement for 90% of cost above $20,000. So if you did that, um, you'd initially have to pay out that 26,000 in full cost, but you could submit the, the claim to catastrophic and get reimbursed for somewhere around 5,000 of that. So it would bring you back some money in reimbursements.
With that, um, I would ask for a motion to either approve or deny the payment of, uh, the seven, um, seven bills.
I would move that we pay.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the payment.
Mr. Cohen, couple of questions here.
Sure.
Um, I see the family has a combined annual income of 118,000. And they've got about $36,000 in assets. Has the family made any payments on their own?
We haven't paid out anything yet. Are you talking about to the hospitals or to the?
Yeah, has the patient here had to pay anything out of his own pocket for his own medical care?
Yes, I, I don't know that amount.
That is.
Um, but they have paid certain things, um, up to this point. They haven't left everything completely blank, but I can't give you the, the amount, um, as far as how much they have. They, um, and, um, that, that figure that you're using, um, I'm not sure if that, that sounds kind of high for what I estimated their current income as.
It's on the, yeah, it's on the first page or second page, excuse me. Created on December 10th, 2020. So it'll be page two, down at the bottom. Got a gross annual income.
And you're referring to the ability to pay for him? Oh, yes. Okay.
And then?
Well, that, that amount also, yeah, that amount also includes, um, just about $6,000 from the asset category.
Okay.
So the, the actual, um, income is a little bit less than that.
And then another question here, I think in the first page there had mentioned that, uh, insurance was available to that, uh, to the husband, but they didn't pay for it.
Yes, the wife had insurance, um, but they did not add, um, this person that we're talking about because of the increased costs in premiums, um, from an individual policy up to a family policy.
Do you know what the, uh, premium cost was?
For the individual or for the family?
To add, to add the individual?
I don't have that with me right now. Um, I have a stack of paperwork about this thick with, that might have that information, um, in it somewhere, but I don't have that with me right at this moment.
Yeah, I mean, uh, cancer is, uh, financially, emotionally, physically staggering, uh, obviously. And, uh, financially debilitating to families and, uh, and insurance companies and the public at large in this instance. Um, you know, just concerned that, uh, the individual had insurance available to him and didn't want to pay for it based upon their income. Uh, but it leaves us in a situation now having to deal with the bill and, uh...
Right. And when, you know, I did it in, uh, one of these forms, this, the form that, that you're looking at and that, that I have before me is the one I'm using for the art, these calculations. I did a form for, uh, what the, their income and assets and expenses were at the time of his initial hospital stays. Um, and again, that's in another stack of my paperwork, um, and I don't recall what the, there's a, in line, um, line 42 of the form is the line that we look at for, uh, ability to purchase health insurance. Um, this, this one, um, is at $380. Now, I don't recall, again, off the top of my head, what that figure was, um, when the, before the hospital stays occurred.
Right.
And what, compared to what the cost of the insurance was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it, it, it was a, it was a tough decision to make because I, I could not see, um, a situation where we could say Lincoln County had no liability. Um, this seemed like, uh, and I kind of put that in the notes that this is the best scenario that, um, you know, $26,500 is a, a chunk of money, but in this particular situation, compared to what the total amount of the, the claims were and their situation, I thought it was the best scenario because it does leave, actually, most of the liability le, is still lies with the family, um, not with the county, uh, because they show a lot more ability to pay than, than what Lincoln County is.
I was just going to ask that follow-up question is, does this payment by Lincoln County settle and compromise the claims or does it still leave liability to the family?
Yes, yes and no. At, at this point, yes, it does. It, the, I would, if you approved this, I would, um, we'd pay these claims and, and we'd be done. Because he has insurance, he's covered now, there's no more claims coming in. However, as you're probably aware, the hospital, um, has the right to appeal, um, decisions. So there's no guarantee that, um, the attorney, um, for Avera, the, the attorney for Avera represents both McKinnon and the Heart Hospital, and there's no guarantee that he won't appeal and, um...
I'm, uh, very familiar with who that attorney is, by the way, having dealt with some of these on the private side. Um, but if they don't appeal, the costs are gone then.
If, if he does not appeal, then this is it.
Okay.
Thank you.
If he, if he does appeal, then, then you go, then it's in Mr. Golden's court.
I'm going to go ahead and we're going to move this along. We have a motion and second on the tape floor. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Move on to item nine.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have a request for relief from a county lien. Mr. Golden, are you going to tee that up for us?
This had been, I believe, on the March 2nd meeting, uh, for relief for a lien. At that time, I didn't have all the information for you. I believe I've provided you with a legal memo on that, um, just so that we're all on the same page. On September 23, 2010, there was a lien or a request filed for an application for county poor relief by Sanford. The individual that concerned had actually expressed that she did not want county poor relief, but that really wasn't her choice because that was the hospital that was pursuing it. It was a $90,000 claim. It was settled for $30,000 and then it was submitted to the catastrophic fund and Lincoln County reimbursed $9,000. So that $9,000 is not available to be, um, compromised because that's part of the conditions of being part of the catastrophic fund. There is a second lien which was for funeral cost and that was $2,500. So the total amount of the lien at this time is $32,500. The value of the home that the lien is against at the time that was placed was $230,000. So those are the basic facts.
Is there a mortgage on the home?
That I don't know. Okay.
What's Mr. Rundy requesting? What's county to pay the full $32,000? Or what's, what's, what's the nature of the request?
I think he's, he's present, so...
I'm just asking for the $30,000 because that was something I never knew about. I found out about, a month ago for my mom. I knew about the $2,500 because at that time, when she passed away, she had no life insurance, no assets besides being secondary on my house. I'm the one that makes the, the mortgage payment. I'm the one that worked through, going through school and I was on medical leave at the time. I had surgery when my mom passed away and didn't have the funds myself to pay for a funeral. So I knew about the $2,500 and that is one I had planned on paying. I found it, again, about a month ago, about this $30,000 for her medical bills.
How much is the mortgage?
I'm sorry?
How much is your mortgage?
Uh, my mortgage right now is, uh, $1,560.
What's total amount owed on the mortgage? Are you planning on selling the house?
I wanted to like either sell or refinance, um, and that's when somebody told me I should check to make sure there's nothing on my house and that's when I called about a month ago to find out. And then I've learned that I can't even refinance with a lien on my house.
And you got about $74,000 equity in the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when, when we, my mom was only on the house with me because I had no credit at the time. Her credit was horrible. So right now I'm sitting, I think, at an interest rate of like 5% or more.
Um, can you tell me this, and I apologize, I don't remember from the last meeting, it was a month or two ago. What were the circumstances with your mother?
So at the time this must have happened, she went on disability from, she could no longer work, uh, due to health issues. And she was uninsured. She was waiting for her time period to get Medicaid and I believe that's when she was in the hospital for this. And from reading the paperwork I found from Sanford is because she was uninsured, that's why they sent her to the county for poor relief.
She was owner of the home?
She was the co-owner.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm the primary on everything. She was just secondary because again, at that time I had no credit. And she had credit, but her credit was pretty lousy.
How long, when did you guys buy the home?
Was she making any of the payments toward the home?
She would give me a couple hundred dollars to go towards like groceries and stuff like that. Otherwise, I was the one making all the payments. Um, I just about lost the house, um, because the payment was a lot more. And so I had to go through a re-modification, uh, with, at that time Wells Fargo was my mortgage holder. And so they came up with a new plan for me to lower the payment, then it slowly increased and now it's back up to that 1560.
How long have you all known?
Did your mother have any, uh, life insurance policies?
She didn't. She pretty much lived her paycheck by paycheck and then once she went on disability, that was what she lived off of.
Okay.
And that's why I had to, when she passed away, she had a heart attack in the middle of the night at the house and my brother found her that morning. Um, and I had never had to plan a funeral for anyone and, um, again, I was on medical leave. I was off work for three months for surgery on my foot when all this happened. And that same week that she passed away, I ended up with a blood clot. Plus I was trying to go through school for nursing and finish my last semester of that. That year, uh, 2012 was when she passed away. Um, and nothing of this was ever mentioned to me. She never had brought up or said any of this, that she was sent to the county. Again, I feel like I was blindsided by the whole thing until a month ago or that's when I called and found out about it.
Does anybody got any options? If not, I'm going to move on this.
I, uh, I'll just make this comment. America struggles with medical bills and, uh, we just saw it with the prior one, $500,000 in cancer bills. Horrible, debilitating. Many families struggle with it. What I'm concerned about though, in, in the last presentation Mr. Cohen's made, he said that, uh, the family had paid for some of its own care. He didn't know to what amount or what exact. I do think in this instance, um, no offense, and my condolences on the passing of your mother, by the way, um, I do think the family needs to share in the burden. You know, if the, if the taxpayers are going to share in the burden, um, but the family does too. And there isn't, there is a, uh, incredible sum of equity wealth here in the amount of $74,000. And some of that can be tapped into. What I'm struggling with though is to try to figure out, uh, what amount should be the family's share versus what amount should be the taxpayer's share. Um, I'll just, that's where I'm at. That's the internal struggle I have. And I don't know what that amount should be right now. I'll make a motion that, uh... I'll make a motion that county pay for $7,500 of the $30,000. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Rundy, what? Is there an amount of that $30,000 that you are able to pay towards the lien? I mean, will the bank, do you know if the bank will refinance contingent on you refinancing the $30,000, or how's that?
I haven't asked him that part. Because I haven't even delved into going further with refinancing because I was told from people that if you have a lien on your house, they won't even look at it or touch it until that lien is taken care of.
Couple quick questions again, because what I'm struggling is I'm trying to find out if your mother legitimately had any, you know, ownership in the home, or if it was strictly a signature on a document so you could purchase the home. Did she make any deposit toward the purchase of the home, of the earnest money that went down on the home?
When she sold my grandparents' farmhouse, which I don't know how she's able to do that either, because I was supposed to be the executor of their estate, and my mother did things to me that unfortunately I'm paying for now. My grandma passed, or not passed away, but she ended up with Alzheimer's with dementia, and so my mother became her power of attorney, and so that kind of trumped their will for me to be the executor of the estate. She decided to sell to neighbors, and then she did put a deposit on the house.
Did you have a matching deposit, or was it all her deposit?
It was all hers. At that time, I was living in Florida, and I moved back here because of her health to help take care of her.
Do you know how much it was?
The deposit?
Yeah.
I think 20?
$20,000?
Yeah.
What you're indicating to us, you have no means to remedy any of this, so you'd try to refinance this or anything at this point other than having the full 32.5 taken care of. You're not able to.
I mean, the $2,500 is one I knew about. That was, I had gone to the county for help with her funeral, because again, at that time, I was not working. I was on medical leave, going to school, and didn't have that much money in my account to pay for a funeral. That one is one I have planned on taking care of. It's the $30,000 that I had no clue about for her medical bills that I just found out about a month ago.
Are you planning on staying in the home?
If I can refinance it, yes. It's something, I mean, it's my home. It's the one I've worked hard for, put myself through school for to have.
I do emphasize, you're correct. You cannot refinance when there is a judgment against the property, no lending institution. Commissioner Aaron's, I was struggling with the very same thing, and I was wondering if we did a 50-50 split, if that has any resonance with any of the commissioners.
That's where I was at as well.
I would make a motion that
Well, we already have
Okay, we have a motion, okay.
You gotta move to amend.
Yeah. Move to amend?
Do you want to amend your motion, Commissioner Aaron's?
Well, Jim, go ahead and make your amendment.
Well, I would hope that you would amend it to, in raising it from $7,500 to, we would go to $15,000, whatever, 50%. Is that $16,250?
Well, he's only asking for the $30,000, so 50% would be 15K.
Yeah. So we would offer a 50% of that 32.5.
He's only asking for the 30.
Yeah, and I'm saying 50%.
Of the total.
Of the 30 or of the 32.5?
Well, of the total, of $30,000, because he's gonna pay the $2,500, is he not?
If your amendment is $15,000, I'll second it.
That's right, because he's paying the $2,500, $30,000 is left, so I'm, we're offering that we pay the $15,000 of the $30,000.
Okay, I'm gonna, you're amending your motion from $7,500 to $15,000.
He's amending my motion. I'm seconding his motion to amend.
Okay, Commissioner Gibbon, you're left out in the cold, I guess.
I'm sorry, we keep that.
Clarification.
All right.
I will, I'm sorry, what did you say exactly?
Sean, are we okay on?
Yes.
Amending it.
Okay. Sean, will you go ahead and call the roll?
If I may, clarification. I think the term we're using is paying, but what we're just doing is reducing the
The county lien.
County lien.
Yes, compromising the lien by $15,000.
I'm calling the roll on the amendment motion, correct?
Please, yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the motion's been amended, but now we have to
Now we have the motion.
Now we have to vote. My bad. Any discussion or any motion to approve?
We have, no.
We have the motion.
Yep.
And we have a second.
We do.
Mr. Gibbon was the one that seconded.
We have approved the amendment of the motion.
So we're still voting on the amended motion.
On the amended motion.
Correct.
All right. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Now we're done.
Thank you.
I think just so, it helps you a little bit, but it did show that both of you had some ownership and some responsibility on this, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's fair. Okay.
Go ahead and move on to item 10. Julia, a new hire?
Good morning. Morning. Have several items for you this morning, the first being a new hire. Kaitlyn Schumacher as a full-time records clerk for the Register of Deeds office at 1719 per hour effective the 24th of March.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Do you mind if I go slightly out of order?
No, I don't.
The next, then, the Register of Deeds is requesting an exception to the recruitment procedures. Currently, what's happening is there's one tenured individual, and so she wants to promote that individual instead of going through the recruitment process, only to have one person that meets the minimum qualifications.
Has it been advertised?
No, she's asking for that exception.
How would we know whether or not there's someone more qualified out there then, if we don't advertise for it?
Typically, with promotional opportunities, they just do an internal application process.
Right, but we don't know if there's other people who want to apply for the job, do we? Until we advertise and
It's my understanding that the minimum qualifications for the position are that relevant work experience in that department, and currently, there's only one person that meets the minimum qualifications.
So we have qualifications in this county that say you have to work for the county in order to be qualified to take the position?
Correct.
We've heard the request. Is there a motion?
She's currently working in the department?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. And this would move from what to what, Julia?
Well, she's looking to move one of the records clerks into the deputy position without recruitment because there's only that one person that has the tenure in that department. So she's looking to forego the recruitment procedures and just move her up.
And then will that open it up for somebody to apply for that job?
Yeah, then we'll repost the records clerk position here another month or so.
Thank you.
I also move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next is to promote. Last week, there was a reclassification of two positions in the state's attorney's office, or I guess that was two weeks ago. So they went through the recruitment process for both positions, and these two individuals have been selected, so it is a promotional opportunity for the both of them. So the first is to promote and reclassify Jessica Summerbold from paralegal to office manager in the state's attorney's office at 2919 per hour effective the 29th of March.
Were the positions advertised to the public?
No, these are internal.
So these were internal promotion and reclassification?
Correct.
So it was promoted to the new position that was created?
Correct.
And the new position was never advertised for?
The new position was re-advertised, yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yep, yep.
No, the new position meaning that this person is taking, not the position they're leaving open. So this position of office manager
Yeah.
That was advertised for?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So the second reclassification in that office then would be to promote Angie Williams from victim's witness legal assistant to lead paralegal in the state's attorney's office at 2704 per hour effective the 29th of March.
And that was advertised for as well to the public, the lead paralegal position?
Nope, it was internal again.
So it was not advertised to the general public?
Not to the general public.
Was the la, but the last one, office manager, that was advertised?
Internally.
Okay, well, I asked whether it was advertised to the public.
Oh, my apologies. That was a misunderstanding. It was recruited for internally. The state's attorney's office wanted to have that promotional opportunity for someone within the office that had that relevant work experience.
Okay, so the general public didn't get an opportunity to apply?
Nope.
Okay. I would have changed my vote on the last one then, if I had known that.
Did you get that, Sean?
Yes.
Thank you. Would consider a motion on item 12?
I also move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, this follows our policies that we have for internal transfers to, yes.
It does.
Thank you.
Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. Move on to item 13. Julia, you're handling that as well?
What is 13? I'm sorry.
It's an update to the regular and part-time employee policy?
Yeah, and this is strictly due to the fact that SDRS made some changes through legislature, legislation on April 13th. So essentially, what is happening is anybody that is part-time previously in the system can work no more than 24 hours or a total of 1,250 hours within the fiscal period of the organization. And they are having us do more recording, and that is due to an IRS compliance situation that they came across. So they're just complying, we're complying with the new regulation. The way I drafted the policy is that regardless of whether employees are previously in the SDRS system or have some other methodology of retirement, whatever it may wish, it's consistent for continuity purposes. Just to be more consistent with the practice. So it's updated. The only thing that really changed within the policy is the 24 to 49 hours per week. It was 20 hours, but now it's 24.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the update or deny it?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, and on that note, part of that policy, at the very, very bottom, it states that converting to a part-time position, that there needs to be a 13-week break. The 13-week break is essential or imperative because of the ACA and then also SDRS requirements. The sheriff is asking for an exception to the policy because there's someone that's impacted by the new SDRS regulations. So he would like an exception for them to just work right away and not have that 13-week break. I have made sure that the county is in compliance, that he can do this, that it wants to move this direction, so we're in compliance, we're able to move forward if the commission is supportive.
So we're allowed to make a exception to policy to an IRS regulation or rule?
No, this, okay, so getting into kind of the weeds a little bit, is SDRS says that it starts April 1st, these new regulations. This employee doesn't need to count any of the hours previously worked. So starting April 1st, he'll just need to count those hours to go towards this new regulation. So the sheriff says, well, I don't, you know, I prefer that we have him working because I need the help right now. I don't want him to have a 13-week break in service. I prefer that he transition right into that 24-hour mark and keep on with his employment.
Because the rules start at April 1st, that's the reason we get to kind of circumvent the rule?
Correct. So the next year
Getting us in trouble.
Right, and then the other aspect, again, getting in the weeds a little bit, is the ACA portion. Is the ACA portion, but that's null and void because of some things I can talk about. It's benefits related, but it's been handled. It's a non-issue. So there's two different areas, but we're in compliance if you want to move forward.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, so the next is a promotional opportunity for Jared Espolin from sergeant to lieutenant in the sheriff's office. Compensation 2928 per hour effective the 13th of April.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
And then lastly, I believe.
Yes, go ahead, item 17.
Is updates to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. I gave you a brief outline. Essentially, there's several working parts to this act passed, recently passed, but the first is the ability for employers to extend through September 30th that COVID leave. Now, my recommendation, as you see, is to extend it through either April or May, and that's due to a couple different factors. It's my understanding that there's no tax relief to extend this. So there's that, it's a financial impact to county. Two, it's my understanding, too, that the vaccines will be available to anybody over the age of 16 as of April 2nd. So this gives employees the opportunity, if they so wish, to get the vaccine, so giving them a little bit of time. And third, oh, the large majority of employees have available sick time.
What is the financial impact to the county?
Well, it's a little up in the air, because let's say hypothetically, someone has COVID. We give two weeks of, you know, COVID leave. We don't get reimbursed for that, is what I'm understanding at this point anymore.
And the way we've been doing is, we just add that on And the way we've been doing is, we just add that on, basically. They get their two weeks, and then they still retain whatever their, our policy provides for sick and family leave time.
Yep, you're exactly right.
Julia, the, that may be true for the first one, but the second go-around of COVID or this package that was just passed by Congress may include that we would be able to collect that. That isn't for sure, but there has been some loopholes, you know, from the first one where things weren't allowed, and they're going to try to maybe correct that. The Treasury Department hasn't determined yet all the rules on what you can spend money on, of course. But that may be something that we could look at at a later date, so.
Hopefully, that's the case, yes. It's just a lot of unknowns at this point.
Yeah, very much so.
Still.
So what action are we asking for here to?
Well, the, what's in question right now is if, one, you want to extend the COVID leave, and then the next question is until when, if you want to extend it?
So this would be if somebody gets COVID themselves, then they get their two weeks? Or a family member gets COVID?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Or has to quarantine or becomes down with COVID-related symptoms. However, if somebody's already exhausted their 80 hours, then it wouldn't be available to them, is what I'm proposing.
Correct. That's my understanding of what we've been doing so far.
You're exactly right, yep.
Right.
Is there a motion?
I would move that we extend it to the end of April.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Rombo, NOVAC contract.
So just informality, basically, we've reached that point where we need to have a garbage service at the Lennox 4-H building. And I had John Hanson bet the different contractors since he's worked closely with them, and we opted to go for using NOVAC.
How much is it, John?
It's $5501 a month. With additional, if we have additional needs, we'll pay additionally $13 a yard.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins, you're going to handle item 19?
I just wanted to discuss a little bit today. We've gone through measures to identify property that's in excess for the county. This is a property that was purchased in the intent of possibly putting a 4-H ground on initially. It is obviously, since then, we've acquired property by Lennox to fulfill that need. My desire would be is that we, if the highway shop would identify the areas in which they need to protect for its activities, and then we deem that the rest of that property then would be surplus. Hopefully, if we would, be able to use those funds for additional activities at the 4-H, but if it deems just to go into the general fund for use for the taxpayers, so be it. So my action would be is to ask the highway shop to identify, you know, what is crucial for their activities, so.
All right. I don't know that we need to take any action on that.
I think Jared wants to come up and speak.
Do you, Jared? Well, come on up.
One thing I'd point out, right south of the fence that it had on there, we got two dirt piles. We got a clay pile and a dirt pile. So even where the fences were, we're still further south of that. One thing to keep in mind, this is our drainage way, too, off of all of our property. So just keep that in mind.
The initial, Jared, do you remember, what was the initial ask for acres for the highway shop?
20?
20, and we acquired 68 or something like that?
Yeah.
Does that guy farm right up to the, to the crick that's there? Does he farm right over the top of it or not?
Yeah.
Or is it wetlands?
Nope, nope, farms right over top of it.
Okay.
It's just, it's not a crick, it's just for excessive runoff.
Got it.
So if there's desire to pursue that, I would ask for support in doing so. And if not, I guess we'll just leave it as county property.
What are the thoughts of the commission on that? I don't know, it's not on here as a motion, but my thought would be to go ahead and surplus it, although with one, my one hesitancy would be the drainage issue if that was somehow going to affect anything, but I don't know right now that it would, so.
And fortunate for county perspective at this point, land values have been increasing recently again. So it might be an opportune time to get the taxpayers reimbursed for the money that they put forth for the 4-H facilities, and then otherwise enhance the 4-H facilities. Because this was the purpose at the time that this was purchased, is a potential 4-H building ground, and that obviously is not going to happen now.
So, Mr. Golden, we need to put that on a future agenda, correct? To surplus it, and I'm fine with doing that.
Before we did that, I would definitely want to make sure the highway department had an opportunity time to identify, you know, what they need to, you know, set as property lines for its use. So that's kind of the direction I'm asking today, so.
Jared, do you want to talk to Terry about that, or we can contact him? Thank you.
Madam Chair, unfortunately, due to a meeting, I have, I need to leave at this time.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 20, micro-surfacing project bid. Jared, you're up.
So the first item here, approve and award bid for our micro-surface project to Aztec Corp. in the amount of $598,687.13.
I'd like to move.
Second.
How, how much lower were they, Jared, than?
To the other bids, it looks, to the closest one, about $40,000, $42,000 lower. They also have our chip seal project as well.
Okay. Thank you. Heard the request. Is there a motion?
We had.
We have a motion by Gibbon and second by Schmidt.
All right, we got it. Sean, you want to go ahead and call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Item 21, a 2021 bridge project bid.
So, yeah, it'd be to approve and award the bid for our bridge project, which that would be 605 companies in the amount of $184,956.80.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
And we have a grant application resolution for 42-200-249 bridge replacement structure.
Yep, looking for you to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution for that. This grant application for that structure, and that structure's at the south end of our 139 gravel road.
So moved.
Madam Chair?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Item 23, 2021 federal bridge replacement grant application resolution for 42-200-226.
Same thing, looking for approval and authorize the chair to sign that resolution for that replacement grant. This one is also on 139 gravel outside of Weber Seeks Pond area.
I'd like to move. Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Item 24, same thing, grant application for 42-120-158.
Yep, same thing. Authorize the chair to sign the resolution for the bridge replacement. This bridge is located on 125 south of 18.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Item 25, again, federal bridge replacement grant application resolution for 42-120-283.
Yep, authorize the chair to sign this resolution for bridge replacement. This bridge is located on the south end of 125.
So moved.
Madam Chair?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
We have a 2021 bridge improvement grant, preservation grant for 42-020-201.
Yeah, so we were awarded a big grant for preservation on this in the amount of $517,600 for the load bearing support of this structure. That bridge is on 105, right south of 140, we call it the Orange Bridge.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Hey, remember this for next time. Keep up the standard of moving me through quick, would you? Perfect.
We'll work on that. Moving on to item 28, SDCL 10-3-14, annual conference with commission and director of equalization. Carla, good morning.
Good morning. So in accordance to South Dakota Codified Law 10-3-14, the director of equalization shall meet the county commissioners at the office of the county commission on the first meeting of April for conference in reference to the performance of the director's duties. For several years, we have done this in open session, and some of the information that we have gone over, I submitted with the agenda. And I apologize, I had a landscape-type setting. When I dumped it into the civic clerk, it portrayed it. So some of it's on the second page. Some of the information that we have gone over in years past is in regards to the reappraisal. So in 2015, Lincoln County started the countywide reappraisal, and I have given you information on how many parcels we've been able to complete during the reappraisal cycle. Last year, we did get a late start because of COVID. We determined we were going to do our reappraisal slightly different. Instead of having interior-type inspections, we sent questionnaires to property owners. We did get a good response back, very similar to an interior inspection. It was about a 60% response back from the property owners. We were able to complete about 2,400 reappraisal projects in 2020. For 2021, we are slated to do approximately 2,700 parcels. And I think if you look through the years, you're looking at, well, Carla, in 2017, 18, and 19, you were in the upwards of the 4,000s to 5,000 parcels that we were able to inspect. Well, as we head into our rural communities, we have drive time. We have multiple buildings. It's not just a house and a garage. It's a house, a garage, a grain bin, sheds, and the drive time alone. So this year, we're looking to get started sometime late April and complete about 2,700 parcels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
So some of the other information that I have supplied to you is some of the workshops, conferences, and schools that are available for the assessors for the 2021 assessment year. I did lay out a few workshops, conferences, and schools. As COVID has, last year took away a lot of opportunities. We had some virtual conferences last year, but all of our schoolings and workshops were put on hold. And as we've progressed through the years, some of these workshop schools and conferences have started coming back to the assessors, taking place on more of a personal-type conference rather than virtual. For 2021, we do have the SDAAO conference in Hot Springs that will be onsite. We have approximately six to seven employees that are, will be in attendance with that. We also have been informed just recently that the annual school will be held in September, and that's in Pier. And the North Central Regional Association of Assessing Officers will be having a virtual conference in June of '21. So right now, those are the conferences, school, and workshops that we have available for the certification process for the assessors. Staffing has not changed. We did decrease staffing by one in 2020. We currently have 10 certified appraisers, three full-time property technicians with a part-time property technician, myself and the deputy. As of today, we have one vacancy in the office, and that's an appraiser position. I'll get into the workloads and such as we go later in, during this revaluation. So appeals, appeals are what we are dealing with right now. So all the local boards have already met. They met the third week in March. This year was a larger year than normal for appeals. Some of the reasonings for the large increase in appeals, we had a couple property owners in Sioux Falls that had multiple properties that they appealed. There was a condo unit that had 55 that appealed. So that brought our numbers up above the previous years. Another big increase that we had in appeals in 2021 came from Lennox. What is different and what happened in Lennox this year versus last year or any other year? We did a desktop appraisal. And what that meant was we took our property information that we had on file, and we put it into our mass appraisal system. And we used the information we had currently and just came up with a reevaluated assessed value in Lennox. A lot of those Lennox properties saw some big increases, anywhere from 20 to 30%, which is not abnormal for our reappraisal process to see some of those large increases. So the Lennox brought our total appeal, total appeals numbers up quite dramatically. The other areas, and I have highlighted Lynn, LaValle, Canton, Grant, and Perry, those were also reappraisal areas that we had done into 2020. The numbers are slightly larger, but not to a concerning percentage. When you look at the percentage of parcels, in Lincoln County, we have approximately 29,000 to 30,000 parcels. Less than a percent are appealing their values, less than a percent, so. What I don't have for you, and I, doc, can I get the doc cam up? What I don't have on here, and just, I have some chicken scratch that I wanted to touch basis with you. So on Monday, the 19th, at 8:30, we'll be holding our consolidated board of equalization. And the consolidated board of equalization consists of three county commissioners, a school board member in Canton, And the consolidated board of equalization consists of three county commissioners, a school board member in Canton, and a city official. So, that will be on the nineteenth at eight-thirty. And we have approximately eighteen appeals, and that changes every probably hour. So, what the total appeal will be is to be determined because the deadline is today. So, there could be some more appeals, but right now, we're looking at about eighteen appeals. And we give them a ten minutes during the county and consolidated board. So, we're looking at, you know, for sure, three hours of consolidated board. And then, from there, Tuesday afternoon, starting at one, we will go into county board of equalization, and we have blocked off from one to five P.M. And again, have a session from six to nine P.M. So, it'll be a full afternoon and into the evening. And I foresee that being filled by today. Because right now, we have about a hundred and fifteen appeals coming to county board. You know, one of which is fifty-five parcels. So, it's one owner, fifty-five parcels. We won't give them ten minutes for each parcel because they're all essentially the same. We will give them extended time just to make actions on the board. So, that's what we're looking at now. That number will change after, after today. We do have an overflow day, and that will start Thursday at one P.M. We will finish up any appeals that we weren't able to complete on Tuesday, and then also do our owner-occupied appeals and our exempts. And this year, our exempt properties will be dealing with just a handful of new exempts. It wasn't our five years, so we had to reevaluate every exempt property. It's only our new properties this year, and then, and just a motion to approve those continuation exempts. And you can do that in one motion.
We're not, we're not having a meeting on the twentieth, correct?
That is, is that the Wednesday?
A regular meeting, and that's a Tuesday, the twentieth.
That's correct.
So, it'll just be in the afternoon?
Mm-hmm.
That will be here for boards?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Yep, one to five, six to nine.
We'll be using the new agenda software that you currently are working with. It will list the time, the owner, and the parcel number in each agenda slot. What we will include is our comparables or our PowerPoint that you are very familiar with. It'll also include the PT seventeen, which is the objection to real property. That's the form that the appellant fills out, so you'll be able to see from your agenda software their reason for the appeal and what they would consider their value on their properties. And then, in the third slot on each appeal, we will supply you with any documentation that we received from the appellant. So, you'll see time, owner name, and parcel, and then, three attachments, all labeled exactly the same. It'll be our PowerPoint, the PT seventeen, and then, supporting documentation. Do we have any questions with any of that information?
I don't. Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gibbon, did you have a question? I saw you, no, okay.
The nineteenth. Monday and the nineteenth, what was that for?
The nineteenth, which is a Monday, starting at eighty, eight-thirty, is a consolidated board of equalization. Sean did find a resolution last year through doing some digging. It's only three commissioners, one school board member, and one city official.
Who's gonna get tapped on that?
Well, I have court on Thursday, so I'm out for the overflow, but I can do Monday and Tuesday. So, I can be here for Monday.
At first thought, when Sean and Sheri and I were visiting, we were thinking maybe the chairman, the co-chairman, and then Commissioner Gibbon, because it's his district.
Sure.
Yeah.
You're available?
On Monday.
Right, okay. Commissioner Ehrens, are you available on Monday?
Those days work for me.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I can help out another day, too, if there's need.
I think that's a great choice on Monday.
Hmm?
I think that's good, routine.
Tuesdays would be good, too, because it's a long day and make sure that we have a quorum here. I'm not sure who's on the list right now.
I'm here on the twentieth.
Can, can we have everybody here?
We can, it'd be good.
Preferable.
Because you're going to deal with a public that has expectations.
The second set of information that I provided for you during this conference is in regards to our property transfers. And what are property transfers? Any property that has transferred in ownership comes through the register of deeds. They file it, and then, they give us what is referred to as a PT seventeen, property tax form. I think I said fifteen, it's actually fifty-five. We process all those property transfers. We had in upwards of thirty-three-hundred property transfers in two thousand and twenty. Of those three thousand three hundred, we had twenty-nine good egg sales, and we had thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-three good non-egg. And what I mean by good is they were market, open-market type sales. They were listed with a realtor on the open market, no relationship, no...
Arms-length transaction.
Yep, an arms-length transaction, thank you. So, after we evaluate all of our good arms-length transactions, we look at a median assessed ratio. And what that is, it's our assessed value versus our selling price, and we come up with a median ratio. And for our egg properties, our median ratio was approximately forty-one point forty-seven percent. Quite low. Egg property is not being valued on a market approach valuation system. It's a productivity system, so not concerning on the forty-one point forty-seven. All of our productivity information is supplied to us by SDSU and Department of Revenue and other sources. By law, the reason why keep a ratio in place and we have to look and make sure that our properties are not constitutionally over market value. So, we're way under. Our non-egg transfers, we had, we started off with a median ratio of eighty-four point eight percent. Well, by law, we have to be over eighty-five. So, our range is between, state law says hundred percent of market. Department of Revenue and others, other parts of the law say directors of equalization can be between eighty-five and a hundred. At the very first look of all of our property transfers, we are below eighty-five percent. So, at that time, the directors of equalization staff, what we do is, we start analyzing. You know, where are we off? Where, you know, is it in a certain neighborhood? Is it a certain city? Is it, you know, we just start analyzing all of our property transfers. And then, we come up with what's known as intentions. And those intentions are what we plan to do to make this above eighty-five percent, bit closer to a hundred percent, which is the market valuation. And those intentions are sent to Pier every year. And then, Pier comes back with another set of numbers, which I'll get to in just a couple minutes. So, some of the information that I provide to you with this study is seven-point-five percent of all of these good sales were over a hundred percent of assessed value. Keep in mind, some of those are foreclosures that have taken place in the county. And some other studies that you don't see behind the scenes are some of those properties that were purchased in June of two thousand and twenty. And then, in July, they got a building permit for some lower-level finishes or remodels. Some of those types of situations are within that seven and a half percent. So, there were improvements after the sale, and assessments were made, assessments were increased because of the improvements. So, after all the analyzation that we do, after all of the building permits that we have inspected, after everything that we do, the reappraisals that we do throughout the year, our ending ratio becomes ninety-point-eight-two percent. So, we go from eighty-four point eight percent. And then, after any adjustments, after we've reappraised, relooked at all of our statistics, we've moved that median ratio to ninety-point-eight-two. So, what that means is, our assessments are at ninety-point-eight-two percent of the selling prices, on average. On average, not everyone, because we still have, now, we have thirteen percent that are over a hundred percent. And one of the percentages or the numbers that I didn't touch on, while we had seven and a half percent that were over a hundred percent, we had fifty-one percent of our sales were under eighty-five. That meant we were low. We were low in our assessments in regards to market. But after we reappraised, did the building permits, now, we're only twenty-six percent of the thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-three sales, twenty-six percent of them are still under eighty-five percent. But you're going to have that. You know, what you have is the sixty percent where we're right on target. And then, we have fifteen percent where we're too high, and we have twenty-six percent that are too low. In the perfect world, we would be all at ninety-point-eight-two, but that's just not...
Carla, I have a question.
It's not even possible.
Real estate today is pretty much on fire. And you have tremendous number of sales where property is listed at a certain price. And because of the competition and scarcity of available properties, they overbid these things. So, they'll get into a bidding war, and a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house can go for a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar house. I understand this, and understand the assessment has to go through the mortgage and all that kind of stuff. My concern is, if you're listing that at, market was at two-hundred, and the sell price is two-forty, is that considered market, then, at that inflated price? Because what I'm worried about is the fact that we live in this, in this time, and we have property that is overpriced. And if we use that as the market based upon which we apply the ninety percent value on that particular property, what happens when real estate goes around? Because it comes around, and it will go down at some point in time. So, then, are we prepared to make that adjustment to the taxpayer, saying, well, we know it was artificially high, and now it is reality? Are we capable of then reassessing that at a lower price? Because I'm concerned about the fact that our, that our taxes are just too damn high right now. And it concerns me. So, I wondered how we do this, when you consider market? Is that at the sale price of the property after it's been artificially built higher? Or do we go back to the original asking price? I don't know if I'm making that clear at all, but you understand what I'm trying to say.
So, the statistics and the information that we work with is what's recorded in the register of deeds.
Okay.
So, that would be what you would consider the inflated price.
Correct.
As for assessments, we look at the sale prices, and we make adjustments in according to the sale price. But our system is set in place to be, what I would consider is a Kelley Blue Book of assessments. We have a book, and we have a manual, and we say, this house is at an average quality, and it's twelve-hundred square feet, and it has a deck and basement finish. And we come up with a value based on our Kelley Blue Book of assessments.
Kelley Blue Book.
Yep, and I have staff that, they don't like me to use the Kelley Blue Book reference, but I think a lot of people understand that. We have a manual that we use to come up with assessments. And then, we make adjustments with the market on properties that have sold. And we try to, we try to determine what is driving the market. Is it a certain neighborhood? Is it a certain style of home? Is it a certain, you know, occupancy? You know, the duplexes versus townhomes versus single-family? We make, we look at all of those different categories, and we try to determine what is driving the market. And yes, we do use what is recorded in the register of deeds, but we don't do a one-year analysis. Because we know that this is a really high year, and interest rates are low, inventory is low, there's a lot of things that are, you know, driving that, and that's why we do a one-year, a two-year, and a three-year analysis. And a lot of our final determination is based on more of a two-year average than the one-year because of what's happening in it. And that's why we end up with our median ratio of ninety-point-eight-two. And my guess, my best guess in any of this analysis, those twenty-six percent that are under eighty-five percent of the median assessment ratio are the people that pay too much. And our assessments say, we can't go that high. We don't have enough information to go that high, because they overpaid. So, that's that group in my best guess, that's that group.
The other thing that, we spend time on the county board talking about individual counties. And some counties are below eighty-five percent, and they get responded, they have, they get gigged from the state where they have to raise that. So, my question is, okay, so eighty-five is probably the standard that the state has set. We're at ninety. Now, did we, did we do this according to the book? Or can we have an ability to say, well, maybe ninety percent is too high? Maybe it should be eighty-seven percent, I don't know. But how, that concerns me, again, at ninety percent of the value versus other counties that get by with eighty-five percent of that evaluation, why are we, why are we at ninety percent? That's my question.
Absolutely.
Why aren't we at eighty-five?
That brings me to the third page, and we can come back to this one.
Okay.
After we get to the third.
Because my follow-up question is, do we have the discretion to back that down?
Does the county board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, that question has been brought to me several times. Why is Lincoln County so high? Why are other counties so low? I put together other counties. Some counties that are very similar to Lincoln County, and some counties that are close along the borders of Lincoln County. We're actually low. Bon Home and Union have a lower, these are level of assessments, median level of assessments. Lincoln County is still probably on the low end of assessments. What I tell my staff in the office is, I wish they didn't make the tax issue an assessment issue. My job is to put a value on a property. And state law says that value shou- shall be, shall be market value. I don't determine the taxes, but I do determine the value.
I'm just looking, oh, I, I, I'm surprised Turner County is right up there with Pennington County, I, you know.
I'm not.
Seems relatively.
This is their third year of a reappraisal. Their values are, they have been, this is their third cycle of a reappraisal. They've been reassessing properties the way they should have been for at least fifteen to twenty years.
I had a, I had a conversation with one of the commissioners from Union County and I see they're at eighty six. Now, okay, take one more minute for you please. When I look at a county like Union County, for example, that was at eighty nine and in eighteen, nineteen, it went to eighty five and now it went back up. What constitutes a reduction of, of going from one or going down from eighty nine to eighty five? Use that for any county. Why did that happen? Is that just the properties or the sales were that much lower on that particular year that they used for, for the market?
I don't want to speak for Lincoln or for Union County, but I can see if we go back to the previous slide, Jake. Do you see where we were started out at eighty four point eight? I could have raised one percent and we would have been at eighty five percent. And that's the low bar. It's where you tell your kids, you're gonna pass with a D. You're gonna pass high school with a D. And that's where I look at eighty five percent. I can pass. But state law still says market value a hundred percent. I want to give some leeway to Lincoln County in regards to what if the market continues to increase? And it increased a lot, six to seven percent, the market did. Six to seven percent. Lots of information out on Keloland, Argus Leader, um, this Sioux Falls Business Journal, six to seven percent all day long. If I increase by one percent and just set the bar at eighty five and it continues to increase. Go from eighty five down to seventy really fast. And then what do I have to do? I have to increase ten percent, fifteen percent on already properties that we've reassessed. And then we hear another set of, you know, uh, concerns out there. That's how, that's how I look at it. Why a lot of county assessors, they have this, this number in their head for their level of assessment, their median level assessment, a lot of them say between ninety two and ninety four. And that gives them leeway if the markets increase or the markets decrease. That target remains, um, or that bullseye remains, you know, very close to the target. You can still reach your target without driving or increasing assessments or decreasing them if it happens to burst.
Little different question, Carla.
You bet.
You know, years prior, we've had some people who come in and they've got an appraisal on their property and they just bought it and market would tell us, hey, I bought my house at two hundred thousand and I got an appraisal here that my bank did for me and it came in at two oh two. Are we gonna see a lot of those again this year? Or have you worked with those people administratively to try to compromise their claims?
Great question. So, yes, we have had a handful of those, some of which we have put over into a consent agenda, like we looked at their appraisal, we felt it was a very credible, it was not just for refinancing, more restricted and do an interior. I mean, it was a, a, a full type fee appraisal. Um, we have moved those appeals over to a consent agreed with the appraisal value, yes.
Okay.
Yep. You will see a few of them that we are in disagreement with also and you'll, you'll see why.
We'll hear the case.
Pardon?
We'll hear the case.
Okay. Um, I do have some more chicken str- scratches to show you in regards to the level of assessment and what it means and how it affects, how it affects your taxable value. So. In two thousand twenty one, our level of assessment was ninety point eight two percent after an audit. Every year, the South Dakota Department Revenue will come up with a factor. And that factor is what's applied to all assessments, all assessed values to come up with a taxable value. And it's a very simple formula. Eighty five percent divided by our level of assessment equals the factor. After an audit, the department revenue says, okay, Lincoln County, you're at ninety point eight two percent of market median. You're taxed at eighty, a representation of eighty five percent. So you're taxed at eighty five percent. You're not at a hundred. So to bring this level of assessment to an eighty five percent taxable level, we apply this number to all assessments. So what does that mean? That means for every hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, year twenty twenty one, you would be taxed at ninety three thousand five hundred because a hundred thousand times the factor equals the taxable value. And you can see that we were at ninety point two last year, so our factor, so for our ta- twenty twenty taxes paid twenty twenty one, our level of assessment was ninety point two. So we take our assessed value times the factor, your taxable value last year or this year for your tax year, for every hundred thousand, you were taxed on ninety four point two hundred, or ninety four thousand two hundred dollars. And then I just did it by year. So Commissioner Aaron's, can you, do you have the authority to lower it? The assessed value from ninety point eight two? I believe in. Uh, and I, I don't have the law number right at hand, but you do have the authority to lower that.
That's what I'm trying to look for.
To eighty five. But our taxable value, our factor would now become one. So you're still on every hundred thousand dollars being taxed at ninety three thousand five hundred, even if you lowered all values to that eighty five. You would still pay taxes on that same amount.
I think going towards what Commissioner Schmidt was saying is, he is, if I'm hearing him correctly, identifying an overheated market. Is there a discretionary authority there on the part of this board to roll that back en masse? You know, like let's say across the board, if the assessed value comes in at X, we can dial that back. Do we have that authority? You know, because for example, you may not get everybody in the heated market filing a property tax appeal, like you said, less than one percent. But does the board have the ability on behalf of those people to dial that back?
This is, this is your, um, what you have the power to do. And I believe, and you're more apt to the legal question than I am. Equalize between taxing districts and between classes of property. The board shall raise or lower, if necessary, each class of property on a percentage basis covering the class as a whole within the assessment district. So my understanding is Lincoln County is a assessment district.
But that would only apply if you were equalizing between the taxing districts?
I.
I mean, that's part of that paragraph, so that wouldn't apply across the board, at least in my opinion.
I will tell you this how it was brought up right after our first year of reappraisal because there were concerns that the values were, you know, they were well above what they were before. I did reach out to the department revenue and I said, has anybody ever done this, this number four? And nobody in the department revenue at that time had heard of a county doing it. I don't know what it would look like and I'm not sure how it would be applied. I mean, I would leave that question, you know, up to our legal counsel if the board were to wanting to do something within subsection four.
Carla, I, I, I admire your, your team and your, you know, your tenacity at getting this right. But here's where, here's what confronts me is people call me and they'll say, do you know that my situation went up twenty percent, twenty five percent, uh, whatever? And, and you try to explain to them, yes, there's a school district involved, look at what the county gets, uh, you know, and I know we get a very small percentage, but overall, the taxes are what the taxes are and we can't control what the school districts are. But we can make assessments at what value that we, what percentage we put on. And we got a lot of angry people out there. This, I, I've had, I've had the great honor and ability to sit behind this thing for a long time and I've never had so many people upset with taxes as they are this year. And that's what my concern is. That's, that's what I'm looking at. And I know it's doubly due and what really does concern me is that inflated markets are really out there. We're in a hot, hot situation everywhere you go, that uh prices are inflated well beyond, I think, what their true value is. And I go back to the same situation again, how do we have the ability to adjust if the market goes down? I mean, I, I, that, that's, uh, and I look at that from a standpoint, from a income for not only school districts, but an income for counties as well. If we have set something artificially high, we get the taxes at that level and the market goes south and then we have to readjust that to market, well, then our income goes down accordingly as well. So, uh, it's, you know, you're on wiggly ground in my mind.
We have the same ability to raise and lower values in according to the market. Unfortunately, we're always a year behind because when we.
You're, yeah, you are.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at our twenty twenty assessments to come up with our twenty twen- or twenty twenty sales to come up with our twenty twenty one assessments. So we're always working backwards, we gotta wait to see what the market does and then we, you know, make our next year predictions on our assessments. And um, we have the same ability to lower one percent as in to raise one percent in a neighborhood, in a city, um, by a class. We can do that. I mean, I still feel like, okay, I've got a few years left, very few, like three and twelve, twelve days and whatever hours, no.
Okay.
So I want to actually lower values someday and see what the taxes do because it's not gonna change the taxes. It's not going to change the taxes. And I cannot base my value and adopt a lower standard to serve as a basis for taxes. I'm to put a value on property. I understand we get the same questions in regards, my taxes are too high. I, I don't have the authority or the ability to determine what the tax amounts are. I mean, our, our schools, our city, our townships, our, our county folks, they're the ones that are setting the budget. And I am very respectful for those people in attendance that are concerned about budgets. And I, you know, kudos to them, you know? But I'll be the one to say it. I mean, it starts at the county level, but the biggest chunk of your tax bills goes to the school.
Yeah.
I mean, the biggest, and I'm not blaming the schools, I want to go on right, I'm not blaming the schools. But be mindful of the budgets in those other taxing entities.
Well, you said, you know, we set the value and the school districts can determine whatever mill levy they want to apply to that. I mean, we have no control over that. You know, unfortunately, we, we are hampered by that because we get three percent CPI, which is ever less. So if a person pays five thousand dollars in taxes a year and they pay twenty five hundred dollars uh the first half, the county will probably get about six hundred and fifty bucks and we do all the work for it. So, but I, I'm done preaching, Paula.
I understand.
Okay.
It's a very touchy subject, taxes, assessments, reappraisal. We've been hearing it.
Very contentious.
Thank you, Carla.
So my final slide is a preview of what um may be heard during our future building. I, I put something together for our future uh building committee. Now, these are all factual numbers. When we look at the amount of property transfers, the amount of reappraisal projects, when we look at Platts that are filed in the register of deeds, these all come from a source within the courthouse. Most of which, the register of deeds have two parts to this. What I found very concerning um were two parts, property transfers and Platts. Last year, with the amount of Platts filed in Lincoln County, at this time, there were at this time, there were 40 Platts filed in Lincoln County as of when I put this together last Thursday or Friday. This year, there's 65 Platts. That's about a 60% increase from last year.
Where did most of-
Things are not slowing down.
Were most of those in the joint jurisdiction area between Sioux Falls and Lincoln County? If you know, offhand?
I don't know that. Those are just strictly Platts filed within the county, yep.
I would venture to guess Commissioner Aaron's, if that's true, looking around.
And they all, they, I put these all on some type of curve. It looked, it looked kind of goofy, but you, if you put them over the top of each other, because I'm dealing with hundreds of, a hundred number and a thousand number, and to see that on chart was kind of whacked out. But, you know, our property transfers, as of November, November through March of 2020, we had 1,100 property transfers that were filed in the Register of Deeds. In the same timeframe this year, 1,500. And that usually follows the Platts, this curve usually follows the Platts because, and the amount of homes that are being built. So our Platts, our transfers, and our new home permits usually follow that same curve. And I don't have new home permits at this time for this meeting because that is one of the positions I just filled, so I don't have a good data set for you. But I would be very, I'd be very surprised if it didn't follow that same, same curve. And you can see through the years, there are fluctuations, there are, you know, if you look at 2000, even in 2013, we had 3,100 property transfers that were built. But I'd almost believe that we had, you know, a record number new homes being built and Platts being filed. So there are, there are years where they're lower, you know? In 2014, it went to 2,800. 2019, just last, in two years ago, our property transfers were 2,900. So they were probably in that 35% decrease. And our Platts followed the same, same pattern. Just being in the, in the office that I am and looking at what that meant, it was an extremely wet year. It was an extremely wet year. So a lot of projects didn't get completed or even started, and that's why you saw that upward trend in 2020. So that was, maybe the same thing happened in 2013. I, I wasn't in Lincoln County at that time, but I think weather conditions could play into effect on that.
You might want to bring this slide to our courthouse improvement committee meeting tomorrow night. Sorry, you might want to bring this slide with you to the courthouse improvement committee meeting tomorrow night. And if you have the number of, I don't know if you will by that time, the number of new home permits to add to that as well. If you don't, you don't, but this may be very interesting information to that committee.
I can try to do that. I am putting together a handbook for all of the commissioners and the consolidated board members just to give, give an overview of what we are looking at in regards to how our appeals and our information is put together. I am also putting together some information on our mass appraisal system, how we come up with a value, and some of the statistical testing that we do, and some of the ratios, you know, you saw the end ratio. You didn't see the 1,300 sales that we used to analyze, but I'm going to give you a preview of how we look at an addition, and how we broke it down into, you know, a 12-month study and a 24-month study. And we looked at, you know, we look at the style, the sale prices, because, you know, a lot of folks say, well, you know, it's the 200,000 to 250,000 dollar homes that are selling for more than, you know, what they're assessed at. In, on the flip side, our higher-priced homes aren't selling for, they could be selling for less. We run all those statistics to make sure that our high-priced, our high-dollar homes are not selling for more than our low-selling homes in accordance to a ratio. So we do all of that statistical testing because we don't want to just raise everybody 15% because some of those areas might not need a 10% adjustment. They might be over-assessed. So to put all those blanket adjustments on some of those properties could be over-inflating those. We try to narrow it down to an area, a style, whatever category we, we feel needs the adjustment. For instance, T, we raised 17% on average. Harrisburg, we raised 6% on average. Let's say we decided to raise everything 10%. T would be too low, Harrisburg would be too high. That's not fair. That's not equalizing.
There are no easy answers.
Do you have anything else for us this morning, Carla? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very-
Good data.
A lot of work into it.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead and move on to item 29 on the agenda, Sheri.
Good morning. We have several deceased liens in our office, and I want to kind of get a feel on how we want to do a compromise on them. What we used to do is we'd bring them in on the agenda every now and then and, you know, go through the compromise process as we did earlier today. At this point, we have 13 for Carapoor and 18 that are court-appointed that have been deceased for more than five years as of January 1st, 2021. They have not gone through the catastrophic process. What I wanted to do is take the form that we have, the in-house request for compromise, and just submit that to you without any of the backup information because honestly, it's about this thick. So they have been verified that they are deceased, they have been verified that they have gone through probate, whatever, all that information when I bring them to you. Then after that, on January, with the first meeting in January, then we'll kind of bulk them on there. But I want to make sure that it's okay just to do the in-house request without all the supporting documentation. And these are just, at this point, it's just on people that have been deceased for more than five years as of January 1st, 2021.
Do you need official action on that?
Probably not, it's just, if it's okay to do it this way, then I'll put it, start putting it on the agenda. I'll put it on the agenda within the next meeting or so. We can go through the compromise, it might be on the consent agenda if that works.
If you've got five years' worth and it's documented, I think that's the route to go.
You have it available if somebody wants to look at it.
They want to challenge it, they can.
Yep, yep. And then, I mean, it's basically, we're going into a new computer system, so I want to clean up all the old records-
Sure.
And get up to date on them.
That makes sense. As long as the records are available if somebody wants to.
Yeah, we'll retain the record.
Okay.
We're either in scanned form or paper form.
All right.
Okay, so then the next one is, I started receiving the checks from midco regarding the agreement that was signed on April 1st. I've got $1,200, which is the first two months' payments. And I want to, I know we've talked about whether we were going to put it into the 4H assigned balance fund so that we would have it available for the building. Is that what we want to do? Or do we want to just put it into a rents and the general fund?
I just assumed, say, put into the 4H fund so they have funds available if they start a building. They've got some ability to have some revenue without going through a belaboring process.
I think that was the original intent that we talked about, but-
Well, it was discussed, it was never formalized, and this is for the rent at the transfer station, not at the 4H building. So that's where the difference is.
Okay.
And I think I probably want to board action on that one.
You do want to board action on that one?
Because it's assigning it to the assigned, assigned account.
So what motion would you be looking for?
To be able to put this into the line item for the rents to be used for 4H buildings, and then move to the assigned balance at the year-end.
So moved, Madam Chair, on that motion?
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, so now I've got the first quarter adjustments for the 2021 budget. The first one that I'm looking at is to transfer the budgeted cash from the general fund to the 24/7 fund.
For motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
So if I understand the motion, I'm trying to read it here. It says we're transferring $58,476 to the 24/7 fund?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
And it was budgeted.
And then it says approved distribution of domestic abuse funds.
That's next.
Is that something different?
Yep.
Okay. I was trying to do the math there, and I'm like, oh, that doesn't add up.
It's something different.
Okay, yeah. I second that.
Thank you, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, then I've got automatic budget supplements. These are for grants that the sheriff's office has gotten for overtime, different overtime. It will go into the grant funds and then into wages to offset those wages. I just need approval on that.
Is there a motion?
That's the move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, then last but not least, I have domestic abuse funds. This account is set up to be, the funds are accumulated and then sent out to domestic abuse shelters, whatnots. So currently, we have a balance on this account of $23,262.91. This account is not supposed to keep a balance, it's supposed to be distributed out. What I'm going to do is ask that we distribute this out to the Children's Inn in the amount of $11,631.46, and the Compass Center for $11,631.45. I have done some research on domestic violence places in Lincoln County and with the state's attorney, and these are two places that they refer domestic violence people to. Now, there is an option where the county can retain 10% of it for administrative. I don't know if that's something that you want to think about. But currently this year, we do have funds that are going to Children's Inn in the amount of $7,200, the Compass Center in the amount of $12,000, the Helpline Center $12,000, and InterLakes for $2,800. Those come out of the general fund money, so those have been budgeted and sent. This would be in addition to the budgeted money.
Thank you, I've heard the request, is there a motion?
So this is on top of what's already been budgeted?
Yes, yep. And this, these, this is not our money, this is a money I believe that they get from marriage and divorce fees. So this is by statute money that is supposed to be collected and dispersed. We just have not done it.
Is this the sum we get every year, Sheri?
Every month.
No, but I mean, is it the total aggregate amount?
No, no, this is built up over years.
Well, this has been built up over years?
Years, yeah.
Years, okay. You know, it's kind of like a windfall because if we had already allocated to these, these nonprofits that are dealing with that, this is kind of a windfall situation. So having, if we'd get the same amount every year, then we wouldn't have to pay anything out of our general.
I already looked into that, no, I think it's probably about $6,000 that we accumulate in this. And what I want to do going forward then is probably, I'm going to do, try to do quarterly adjustments, and then I'll look at that fund every quarter and send the money out rather than letting it accumulate like this.
Is it possible to carry over this domestic abuse until next year? So when we are going to make allocations to the Children's Inn or to the Compass Center, that we can apply this money, this $23,000, to their allocation and not hit our, hit our budget?
Well, it obviously is possible because it has happened. However, statutorily, this is supposed to be done annually. So, I mean-
Okay. Well, we could wait. What I'd like to do is something like what Commissioner Schmidt is saying, is at least wait until budget time. And then, because we've already given some money to these folks, and I'm wondering if maybe there's a couple other groups out there that could use some assistance as well.
This domestic violence is specifically for shelters and domestic violence centers. It wouldn't be for the help center or other places that we've already, InterLakes, things like that.
What about Ronald McDonald House?
That's not a domestic abuse center.
Okay, all right. I'm just wondering if there's some other good that we can do without just making a decision here on the spur of the moment?
Well, and, you know, and I get that, and I looked at it, but the statute is very clear that it has to be for domestic violence funds.
And you're asking that this be done today, current?
You don't have to do anything.
Have we already dispersed monies to these people in their regular obli-
We have dispersed general funds to these, the people that I had mentioned.
I think it was $12,000 something to the Compass Center and-
Yep, and $7,200 to Children's Inn. And we, and technically, on your budget process last year, you did say that you wanted $6,500 to go out of this fund to Children's Inn. So you have budgeted $6,500 to already be sent out of this fund to Children's Inn.
I think if it's something that we should have been doing, we should get it done and start with a clean slate and maybe look at those at budget time for the next year.
Yep, and do you want to retain the 10% for administrative fee or just send it out?
I'd keep the 10% for administration fee.
Yeah, if that's what the law allows.
Yeah, I don't have any feelings about that one way or the other. You're asking for a motion on this?
I am.
Is there a motion?
You know, I'm going to move on this, that we do, Sheri, send this money out, but then when it comes to next year, I also would want to notify these that this is kind of a one-time payment, that they adjust their budget and doesn't look to the county for the same kind of support out of our general fund that we have. Having said that, I have received many times overpayments for compensation as a nonprofit, but always with the stipulation that in my next year's budget, I include this one-time payment as the allocation from the county. So having said that, I can, I can move that we will accept your recommendation to these two domestic abuse nonprofits with the stipulation that they are notified that this is a one-time payment, and it may be in lieu of what we would give next year.
With the, with the 10% reduction.
Yeah, with the 10% reduction.
If you change that to Shelby in lieu of, I'll second it.
I'll change it to Shelby.
I'll second that.
Fair enough. Got a motion and a second? Sean, will you call the roll?
What is the motion, clarification, please?
We are going to retain 10%.
We are going to retain 10% of this fund, divide the rest between these two entities, and also notify them that this amount shall be in place of their 2022 budget allotment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we're saying now we won't be budgeting any money for them next year?
Shall be in place or shall be taken into consideration?
No, it shall be in place. They're getting, they're getting their next year's payment now.
Yeah.
Which seems fair.
All right, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Wendy, I didn't realize you were at the beginning of the agenda and at the end, so my apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to step out at about 12:15. My understanding though is that we're going to need an executive session after this. So, I'll turn the chair over to Commissioner Aaron's here in just a few minutes.
Okay, well, I'll try not to take up too much of our time today. I handed out the report that I prepared. I apologize, that was not on Civic Clerk last week because I was still gathering numbers by the time that the agenda items were needed. So, just some highlights from the first quarter for 4H. We had practices for livestock judging in Beersford in January and one in February at the 4H building. Had some members participate at Sue Empire Livestock Show in January, and nine members compete at the STSU Little Eye Virtual Judging Contest at the end of March. Shooting Sports is nearly wrapping up for their season. They started in January 17th, and they have had two outdoor practices on the grounds on two Saturdays when the weather has been nice, so that's been good for them. Their state shoot will be in Piree the last weekend in April. So, then they'll be done practicing there on the 18th. We had a consumer decision-making and horticulture skillathon on President's Day with 13 members that came and did that contest, and will plan for another one in June. We're wrapping up our crafty clover bags. On March, we had gnomes, and we have starter seed kits for April. That'll just be our last one for this 4H year as we get ready for our summer events. The Youth for the Quality Care of Animals training is something that all 4H members have to complete that have any animal projects. So, we had 53 youth that attended those trainings at five different locations. Other items, we had a county 4H t-shirt design that will be the new t-shirt design available on achievement days. We had a market beef weigh-in that we were unable to do last year due to COVID, so it was good to do something kind of normal again. As for me, I gave a report to the county, of the county 4H program to the Canton Rotary in February, partnered with Sue Empire Livestock Show the last week in January. I joined the state 4H Consumer Decision-Making Committee as well as the State Poultry Committee. We interviewed summer intern candidates in February. On March 31st, I turned in a grant to, for the state of South Dakota for the Workforce Education Grant to go towards livestock facility. That is a matching grant. So, the amount of the grant that we are asking for is $175,000. So, they awarded that grant April 19th, so fingers crossed. So, commercial pesticide applicator testing, we have had 11 people test so far for that testing, which is a big change from last year because last year we only had one person test due to internet issues and her, Jessica, being the only person in the office. Right now, we still have four people scheduled to test for the first two weeks in April. And yesterday, when I was at the office, I had two people call that wanted to schedule. But we're a little far out from what they wanted, so we'll see if they were able to get in somewhere else or if they'll be coming to us. So, facility usage for January to March, this just gives you what we've had in our building at that time. So, shooting sports practices, of course, we've had some club meetings in January, February, that consumer decision-making and a horticulture skillathon, judging practice, the YQCA training. One highlight is the East River Rabbit Reader Show was March 20th. They had 1,565 rabbits in that building. The foundation did concessions, and the rabbits plan to come back in November for another show. The Lennox Sunstrom FFA chapter held their spring career development events, March 22nd, which was a Monday. They had 831 students from 25 chapters there. And our building was the home base as well as where they ate their lunch and had the poultry contest. And just to give you some perspective, in a non-COVID year, they have about 1,200 students, probably from about 40 schools that come to that contest. We also had a Turner County 4H Club that used our meeting for one of their club meetings this month. And we had our fruit delivery and sort there March 27th, which is the first time we've done it on a location. And then we've had January and March leaders' meetings. And then coming up in the building, there's just a rabbit fun show, April 10th, which just is a small youth event, and then our fundraiser, fundraiser, May 1st.
You can fit that many people in that building? Wow.
Well, so, with the FFA event, they came in, they could start coming in at 9:00, and then they start getting released at 10:00. So, some of them were outside, and thankfully that day, it was a good day. So, when they came back from their contest, eat their lunch, they were able to eat outside, a lot of them. So, thank goodness it wasn't the next day because it was pretty rainy and muddy the next day, so.
This is a good report, Wendy.
Thank you.
Lot of stuff going on here.
March was quite busy. So, and a lot in a row. And so, I do want to thank John and John for helping us unload the fruit because we needed the forklift to get that off the truck. And that went really fast that day and just helping us move things around, especially when we had back-to-back-to-back events, so. Fruit sales are over, yep. So, the total profit that we brought in from that was $5,800 for the. So, half of that will go to the Leaders Association and half goes back to the clubs. So, okay, thanks.
Can I have a copy of that? That's fine.
All yours, Joel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a request for executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? If so, on what basis?
So moved, go into executive session. And Mr. Chairman, would you read the rationale, please?
I don't know what the rationale is. Legal, so.
South Florida Quotified Law.
That's going to be under SDCL 1-25-2-sub-3.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Sean, please call the roll. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner-
We come out of executive session?
I'll second it.
Any discussion, please? I'll call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron?
Yes. I have motion to adjourn. We're out of executive session. Do I have motion to adjourn?
I so moved that we adjourned.
Second. Call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron?
Yes.